8:01. This is the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners.
This is 17.
You ready? Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, September 4th, 2019. It is 8:01 a.m. Going to start this morning with just a brief moment of silence before Commissioner LaPointe has our invocation this morning. We have had two employees pass away this past weekend. Joe Miller and Renee Hoxypappanah. Just ask you to join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. And for any staff, I believe they've all been informed, there is grief counseling available. Contact your department head or the administration office if you need more details on that. Commissioner LaPointe.
Dear God, we seek your help with our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of our own. We are of diverse opinion here, yet we wish to amend our differences and reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share a little of your wisdom with us to help us do right by all concerned. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Kofia? She is? She's here. Hunley?
Here.
Jewitt?
Here.
Wilak?
Yes, ma'am.
Klaus?
Here.
LaPointe?
Here.
Henchel?
Here. Thank you. We have our quorum. Next item is the minutes of August 21st, 2019, regular session and the minutes of August 28th, 2019, study session. Pages three and eight in your packet respectively. If you don't have any questions or issues or a moment or a motion to approve?
So moved?
Support.
I'm sorry, who is the motion? Bryce? Good job. Okay, moved by Hunley, supported by, who got, okay, Brad, Jewitt, Richard Jewitt. Everyone speaks at once, it's hard to see. To approve the minutes of August 21st and August 28th, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're at first public comment. Bonnie, please read the rules.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The chairperson may, at his or her discretion, allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined germane and necessary to the discussion. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the Board. Prior to the first public comment, the chairperson will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the Board until called upon by the chairperson. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Okay. Anyone like to speak at first public comment? I didn't have anyone indicate a desire to speak during the meeting on any topic, so we'll take a comment now and then at the end of the meeting. Good morning.
Good morning.
Just start with your name and where you're from.
My name is Brenda Rush. I share your concerns about long leg traffic. It was awful getting in here this morning. I live at 10480 Deer Path North. I'd like to begin this morning with an example of what responsible, proactive bipartisan community leadership looks like. The Great Lakes Business Network, a group of over 100 prominent Michigan business owners' response to the Enbridge Tunnel proposal was, "The 66-year-old line five poses immediate threat to our business, economy, and way of life. Discussion of building a tunnel is a diversion from key issues and simply kicks the can down the road. Constructing a utility tunnel has not been properly vetted, would take significant time and resources to complete, and should not be a factor in the decision to decommission the current pipeline as soon as possible." This network of Michigan business leaders formed to protect the Great Lakes from entire environmental threats and subsequent economic consequences. They recognize the unacceptable and very real risk of a line five spill and would have on Michigan tourism, jobs, and the economy. Chris Shepler, owner of Sheplers Mackinac Island Ferry, summed up the reality this group addresses. If there's a spill, I'm done. Our marina is done, our 255 employees are done. Instead of exercising this kind of foresight and leadership, four members of this Board just voted to pledge Grand Traverse County's allegiance to the province of Enbridge. Posturing personal agendas, which have nothing to do with the divine job description of this Commission, to change meeting times, to start meetings with a prayer, to support a Canadian oil company over supporting the best interests of this community, to support a federal census citizen question, to name a few, have caused hours of contentious discussion during which the real work of this Commission has not been addressed. The response of a Beta Board of Director Chairperson after Beta was incorrectly cited as dependent on Enbridge propane was spot-on. We elect and pay state officials to deal with things like line five so that local Commissioners can focus on local issues. A recent Record Eagle article contained a great Grand Traverse Board of Commissioners to-do list of what the focus of this Commission should be. Grand Traverse County requires responsible, proactive bipartisan community leadership to do right by all. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Gretchen Iorio. I live at 520 North Elmwood, here in Traverse City. At the last Board meeting, you passed a resolution with a four-to-three vote in support of a tunnel for line five. The Commission did not provide a process to solicit meaningful public input before drafting this resolution. An overflow crowd at the meeting overwhelmingly stood against it. More than 50 people commented at that meeting, this was unacceptable and/or out of your jurisdiction, and I agree. Your Commissioners coupled political hubris with impunity to their constituents with your vote. The Commission has no authority or expertise to render such a decision. You presented no facts to justify a line-five tunnel. For example, you referenced Beta as a justification for the tunnel. However, as the Record Eagle reported, the Beta Chairperson did not endorse the resolution and appeared to wisely advise the Commission to focus on local issues. Similarly, the Record Eagle reported that the propane supplier to Beta rejected the innuendo that the propane supply would be interrupted with a line-five shutdown. Good government demands that the Commission retract this resolution and get back to the business of running the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Gretchen. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sylvia McCullough. I live at 20359 Douglas Road, Interlock in Michigan, and I second everything that Gretchen said this morning. I'm here to talk about what I've been observing happening at this Commission when I attend meetings, and there appear to have been repeated willful ignorance votes. For example, the vote not to fund the harm reduction clean needle exchange, which has been shown to thwart the spread of hepatitis, C and hepatitis period. We have, apparently you didn't know at the time, a crisis here with the spread of hepatitis due to the opioid crisis. The refusal by some of the people of this Board to take sexual harassment training and sign off on it, which is standard procedure in all corporations, county offices these days. The urging by at least one person on this Board to eliminate the position of the County Drain Commissioner, who oversees the crucial storm damage control. And then just the last meeting, the vote on the resolution to support Enbridge's line-five tunnel. It's obvious, even in your own districts, you don't have majority support for this. And now I'm hearing that some of you are also again feigning willful ignorance in regard to affordable housing. Some of you don't understand what the definition of affordable housing is. Well, in that case, you're in luck because on October 18th at 9:00 a.m. at the Hagerty Center, there is going to be a major affordable housing conference, and I expect every single member of this Board to be at that meeting. I don't want to hear any more votes taken out of willful ignorance. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Morning, Dave.
Morning. Bonnie, since we're into the business of resolutions, I was going to offer another one here.
Can you state?
Oh, David Petro, 9988 Riley Road.
Thank you.
Thank you, Interlock. Whereas United States citizens have historically expressed legitimate revulsion about foreign involvement in our government election process, and whereas the Record Eagle has previously implicated Mr. Larry Inman as having received an organized political endorsement via Facebook from the country of Turkey, and whereas United States citizens have expressed concern about dark money being expended by political organizations specifically from outside our political district, and whereas one particular religious organization from Ferndale, Michigan, has previously invested tens of thousands of dollars to help elect Mr. Larry Inman to the detriment of the citizens of Grand Traverse County, who comprise Michigan House District 104, and whereas democratic government is dependent upon citizen trust and honest decision-making, free of conflicting interests or nefarious expenditures intended to purchase any representative's votes to oppose the democratic rights of citizens, and whereas the FBI has submitted substantial evidence to implicate Representative Larry Inman in a scheme to sell his vote on an important issue in the Michigan Legislature, and whereas we, the people of this county and citizens of all democracies, expect and deserve their government representatives to be intelligent, informed, and rational-thinking adults when making decisions that concern government business, and whereas Representative Larry Inman has offered as a defense in a lawsuit precipitated by the FBI investigation that he has a drug addiction problem that impairs his mental capacity to make reasonable and rational decisions, and whereas the same Larry Inman was a longtime member of this Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners prior to becoming the 104th District Representative, and whereas the citizens and Board of Commissioners of Grand Traverse County are rightfully embarrassed by the continued tenure of Larry Inman as Representative of the 104th District. Now therefore be it resolved that the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners hereby joins the Michigan House of Representatives in support of their 98 to eight vote requesting Representative Larry Inman resign from his elected position to help dispel dispersions about the integrity of politicians coming from this county, and be it further resolved that Grand Traverse County sends this resolution to all counties of Michigan as an invitation to join in expressing support for honest government working to enact the will of we, the people. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else have a public comment this morning? Good morning.
Good morning. Ann Rogers, 1236 Peninsula Drive. I've lived here a long time, and I don't believe I have ever seen this county so divided. It's a microcosm of the division in our country, where the almighty dollar rules and we, the people, are forgotten. And unless this is changed, I fear for democracy in our country. Instead of collaborative discussions and having a planning meeting, you set your agenda without involving anyone else and with no warnings. You have made the meeting so early in the morning that many people cannot attend. You have started an invocation, which is an insult to people who are not of your persuasion. Where is the democracy here? With the climate crisis deepening, we should be spending our time with planning for how we're going to adapt to what is going on in this world. Look at the big picture. Fossil fuels are finite, and here you are supporting a Canadian company. One of these days, we are going to have major problems here, as they do in places like Florida, the Bahamas, and other places. And unless we have the trust and the respect for each other and can work together on these issues, what's going to happen? It's going to be the haves and the have-nots. It's going to be those that can protect themselves and the very vulnerable. It's going to be the people with lots of money and people that are struggling. And as you go on your merry way, I think we need to look to places like the Bahamas now and see how they are going to recover. It was interesting to hear a chef this morning on the radio talking about how he's, he was all prepared. He's feeding people. He's gone out of his way to be ready. What are we doing? Please rethink some of the things that are going on and consider all the people, not just the money class. Thank you.
Thanks, Ann. Anybody else have a public comment this morning? Morning.
Good morning. Matt Scheck, Traverse City. I was here in this room when the previous Board voted relative to the needle exchange program, and they passed it. I think there was only one vote against it. But I thought it was more important that the, our Sheriff of Grand Traverse County spoke before anybody else, anyone else spoke and begged the Commission not to pass the part of it that had to do with the needle exchange program. Perhaps he saw many things in it that maybe only policemen can see and his troopers that are out there enforcing the law. I know that the opioid crisis is an epidemic level in our country, but I saw presented at that meeting using the opioid crisis as the intro, an excuse for fighting a secondary problem, which was caused by the needles that were cast aside. And so it really boiled down to enabling one thing, the opioid crisis, by passing out needles non-judgmentally, as it was determined by some of the people that spoke in favor of the needle exchange program. And I found, I found that rather interesting because they were the ones that would be getting money to fight the program or implement the program. And so sometimes it does boil down to money. If your job is at stake, and even though it can be a very bad policy, which I felt was, the needle exchange program was a very bad policy, it's enabling one segment of a societal problem to fight another problem that is in society. And I really commended, when I spoke, our Sheriff for doing that. He didn't have to do that, but it made a big, important dent in me. So thank you for your listening.
Thanks, Matt. Okay. Seeing no one else, we'll move on to our agenda. Next item is the approval of the agenda. Any Commissioners, anything added? Commissioner LaPointe?
Yes, I'd like to add an item under new business discussion on TIF 97, follow-up on the study session we had a week ago.
Okay. Anyone else? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with that addition?
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the TIF 97 under new business. Support.
Moved by Jewitt, supported by Klaus. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have our agenda. Next item is the consent calendar. Bonnie, whenever you're ready.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one Commission motion without discussion. Any member of the Commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single Commission action adopting the consent calendar. A, receive. Number one, Traverse Area District Library Special Minutes of June 5th. Number two, Traverse Area District Library Special Minutes of June 11th. Number three, Traverse Area District Library Regular Minutes of June 20th. Number four, Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency Minutes of June 20th. Number five, Traverse Area District Library Regular Minutes of July 18th. Number six, Airport Governance Advisory Committee Minutes of July 30th. Number seven, Northwestern Regional Airport Commission Minutes of July 30th. B, approvals. Number one, Central Dispatch Staffing Plan Amendment. Number two, Fiscal Year 2019 Budget Amendments. Number three, Commission on Aging Point of Service Contract Renewal with Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. Number four, Commission on Aging Snow Removal Contracts, Winter 2019, 2020. Number five, Facilities Hall of Justice Boiler Installation.
Okay. Would any members of the Board like anything removed from the consent calendar?
I'd like to, excuse me, remove A6 and A7, the two airport-related. Just have a couple of quick questions.
Okay. Commissioner Hunley, A6 and A7. Commissioner Klaus?
A3 and B2.
You have A3 and B2 for Commissioner Klaus. Commissioner LaPointe?
Hit remove all of them. B4, excuse me, B3. Commission on Aging.
Okay, B3 removed by Commissioner LaPointe. Any others? Would any member of the public like anything removed from the consent calendar for explanation? Seeing none? Okay, so we have consent calendar with removal of A3, A6, A7, B2, and B3. Do we have a motion to approve with the removals?
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Klaus, supported by Kofia. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Hunley?
Yes.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Wilak?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes. Motion carries. Move on now to item 7A, Special Orders of Business. We have with us from MERS, Tony, to answer any questions about the MERS Annual Actuarial Report Evaluation that was presented August 7th. Good morning, Tony. Thanks for coming today.
Good morning. It is my pleasure to be here, and thank you, Chair, Commissioners, members of the administration, elected officials. I'm here to answer your questions on the report.
Okay. Commissioner LaPointe?
Okay. I went back to the report that we received, I guess, a month or so ago, and just one thing on, I don't know if you have it in front of you? I do. Page five, which goes over the rate of returns, et cetera. In the second paragraph, down there comments on asset smoothing, they refer to an appendix, which wasn't in the packet. Last sentence in that paragraph, I don't know if you could?
So it says, it says, "To see historical details of the market rate of returns compared to the smooth actuarial rate of return, refer to this report's appendix." The appendix is available to you, and it's, I can send it to you yet today. What it does is it shows the market rate of returns that we have experienced, and then we apply this smoothing mechanism, which is a five-year smoothing. So in any given year, we do not, we will only recognize 20% of the gains or losses in that year.
Right, I understand, but I think, what I'd like to see is, I think the appendix has the rate of return year by year smoothed, and I can go back and look at it. That's, looking for the detail.
That's correct. I will make sure that you get that.
I guess another question is, last year's rate of return in, let's see, the smooth return was 3.8%, and you gave that brief explanation what smoothing is and which goes throughout this, and the actuarial rate of return is 4.12%. Is MERS pleased with that 4.12? Do they, of a balanced fund, do they think that's competitive or is that below what, obviously it was below the expectation, but compared to other like funds? What's their assessment of that negative 4.12% return? And that's, by the way, I believe is gross of expenses?
No, that...
Is that net or gross? I think they usually do gross.
They, in this case, what they did is, this number is, our actual gross of fees was a negative 3.51. But when you get into how some of these assets that we have are valued, after the actuaries were able to take that performance number and apply some of these, these unique situations that we have, the result was 4.12. And it was, it was still gross of fees, but it has to do with how some of our assets are valued because they're not, they're not a stock or they're not a bond. They're, some of our private equities or even some of our real estate items. So with that additional, it was still gross of fees.
Okay, was, so when you, so when we read these numbers, whether the smooth numbers or the actual numbers, they're gross of fees?
In this report, yes. I do believe that's correct.
Okay.
Our fees were 34 basis points.
Okay, it's still. I guess the other observation, in reading through this report, based upon the schedule that we're on, I find almost most of this report is meaningless in terms of, if we're trying to read that report to see how we are doing to meet our plan, I can't really pull that out of this report. I mean, there's a lot of detail in there by various departments and on and on and on, and that's, I guess that's of importance, but in reading the executive summary, are we on, we have a plan to be on to 100% funded in 2034, is it, I believe? Are we on target? How far are we behind? I mean, that's, those are the things that are, I find to be important. I can't really pull that out of here. The other thing is, a lot of this still refers to ARC on your payments, which is, in my mind, absolutely meaningless. I don't even know why MERS, to be honest with you, uses that term. I believe Grand Traverse has paid, made their ARC payment over the years, but yet we find ourselves today at 48% funded. So again, in reading this, it's a lot of numbers, a lot of facts, but it's, I can't draw a whole lot of conclusions out of it. And another comment is, when I talk to most of the constituents about what's going on in Grand Traverse County, the biggest thing that people focus on is the unfunded liability. I mean, it's the clearest, you know, it's the clearest thing for them to understand. It was a lot of write-ups in the paper, and it really resonates when I talk to people in my district. And the question always comes back is, how did this happen? How did the county, two things, how did they get from 100% funded to less than 50% funded? No, simple answer, they can understand. How did that happen? Now, I guess I'll ask you, what, what do I tell them? Because the thing they seem to seize on, they're saying that MERS performance, their investments haven't been... investments haven't been, um, have been, uh, substandard. I don't think that's the case, but I guess I'd like to get your, your candid answer. What did I tell the average person when they say, how did we end up with this $50 million liability that represents over 50% unfunded liability?
So, so the question is, how do you go from being highly funded to being less than highly funded? And the, the very simplistic answer is that liabilities grew faster than assets. And so then you have to figure out, uh, there's, there's two sides of that. What's causing liability growth? And then, is the asset growth, is it acceptable? And so when you say that liabilities are growing faster than assets, what actions were taken by previous boards to increase liability? And there could be many things. Benefit improvements is one simple way to say liabilities grew faster than, 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 than assets. Another thing that could be done through the more, the MERS board is the assumptions that we use to value that liability changes because the experience of the plan is actually more, uh, let's say it's, it's not, the assumption's not meeting that experience, so we have to change that assumption. So when we change that assumption, liabilities grow. And so there's, there's many things over the, over the years that have caused growth of liabilities. And then when it comes to, to, to asset gains, one of the things that is the biggest drawdown on assets is retire repayments. And then we got to see, well, there's an assumption of when someone's going to retire. And is the assumption of what we call retirement rates in line with the experience of the county? And if we find that the experience is greater than the assumption, that causes liability growth. Another thing is life tables. If we find that people are living longer than what the assumption of, of their, their life expectancy is, that causes liability to go up. And so those are the things that are traditionally on the liability side. On the asset side, are, are the investment rate of return hitting our assumed rates? And so we have, uh, we have published numbers, and we've, we've, we've used them throughout the years to, um, to show what we've been doing and how we've been performing with our assets. One of the things that we've done over the years is we've, we've, we've used some, some numbers. As you can, you know, the one-year is a negative 4.12. The three-year is a, uh, a 6.73. The, the five-year is 5.6, the seven-year is 7.39. The 10-year is 8.51. The six, uh, 20-year is 6.13. But what we've experienced at MERS in the last 20 years is that the markets are more volatile than they ever have been. Prior to 2000, you would find that the bond markets provided a lot more revenue or asset growth than they are currently doing. And so at that time, I mean, basically the MERS portfolio, and this is not exact, but we've kept a fair amount of money in the bond side so that we can make, because we're, we're, we're always in the payout phase of a retirement system, so we have to keep money on hand. So approximately around 40% of that has been in bonds. And that's a secure investment. However, the return on those bonds are much less than what they used to be. And so that money that's being invested since, you know, basically around 2000, the volatility has increased. And you'll see that when you look at our year-over-year returns, that since 2000, there's been six negative numbers. And that is due to this volatility and low interest environment. That's not unique to MERS, that's across the country and basically throughout the world. And so we're in this environment, and we, we state that in this annual valuation, where we're talking about that we are in a low, uh, low-interest environment with high volatility, and because of that, you'll see us reducing our assumed rate of return. We, we did it from 8% to 7.75, and we just did it again, which will become effective next year, from 7.75 to 7.35. And so with that, assets are not growing as, as we would have expected. And when you look at a long-term, uh, plan that has, you know, we're trying to fund this, the numbers show for themselves that this, this issue that we're dealing with on the assets are not allowing them to grow as they otherwise would have been expected to do. So we have to make those changes.
My, my question was, what do I tell the, the person that asks, how did that happen? And, um...
Liabilities grew faster than assets.
Okay. Let's, let's cut to the chase. The county, every year since 1990, the county received a report from MERS that showed the percent of, of funding. And every year they saw it go, they were told, it went down. Funding went down from 102%, went down, ticked down every year, and they saw that happening. Isn't the solution, either they pull out of MERS and go someplace else that's getting a better, they think is getting a better return, or put more money into, make a, make a higher payment? I mean, it's, the ARC, as I've said before, is like the minimum payment on your credit card.
Correct.
And then if you act surprised, my God, the balance is going up, and you make another minimum payment, my God, the balance is going up because I'm spending more, which is the liability and putting, making less of a payment. Isn't the simple answer that the county simply chose not to put money into the fund and spend it in other areas?
Let's say the county paid the minimum required contribution or...
Is, is the minimum required contribution similar to paying on your credit card, which most people understand, you can either pay it off or pay the minimum fee?
The minimum required contribution is what we are required by law to, uh, to, to require our participating groups to pay. You can liken it to a credit card, and I wouldn't say you're far off by doing so, but it is the minimum payment. And when you have an amortization policy that allows for a long timeframe of which to pay off that unfunded, uh, amount, then you may...
How, how insisted were you when you saw every year that they were making the minimum payment? Did you counsel the county back at that time and say, hey, listen, you continue to make this ARC, you're going to go further and further and further in the hole? And as you well know, if we had, if the county had made higher payments back in time, they would have got the income from the revenue it would produce in its terms of investment. So if they had put an extra million in every year over time, back '90, '91, '92, '93, et cetera, we wouldn't be putting 7 million in today.
I believe it was in 2012 that the actuaries started using the, the, um, the, uh, the words that this is your minimum required contribution in the verbiage of the document. So prior to that, we were telling them that this is what you're required to pay, and I believe in 2012, we changed that language to the minimum required contributions. And then we started to provide guidance in that, at that time, in a report that we would have started to encourage municipalities to pay more.
Okay, it just, it seemed so obvious. I mean, this isn't, isn't tough, you know, every year they got a report, you know, this thick, but sort through it and say, okay, fine, give me the number, everything else is interesting, but give me the number, where do we stand? And every year they saw it going less, you know, we were less funded, uh, year after year, common sense would say, jeez, I think we have to start putting more money into it. And it just, it just never seemed to resonate with anybody. I don't know if, if MERS was behind closed doors saying, hey, guys, you guys are on a, a trajectory here that's going to lead you into real trouble, which it has, and we're paying today, we're not going to be able to provide services today because we're spending more money covering our MERS obligation, um, that wouldn't have ta, had to have taken place if we had paid more in the past. It's a simple answer that I can tell the people when they ask, how did this happen? It's simply, over the last 20 years or so, the county, um, whatever, chose not to make adequate payments.
No, I, I wouldn't say that. In 2001, the county decided to go to the defined contribution plan. They decided at, at, that time, that they were going to get out of the business of providing a defined benefit plan to new hires. That was the start of the change. I, I think what, what you have to, I think the answer would be that it didn't take one year or 10 years to get to the, the liability amount that the county has, and it won't take one year or 10 years to pay off that liability.
But, but they saw, they saw the liability growing year after year after year, and the solution is pay more towards that credit card charge. So my, my simple answer is simply, because you didn't, haven't told anything that would change it, is simply, the county had an opportunity that MERS allowed them to pay less than was required to maintain 100% funded, which we all said should be the goal. You should always be 100% funded. Otherwise, if you're not 100% funded, people down the road are going to be paying for expenses you've incurred in the past. So, in all due respect, I can't really very well take your long explanation to explain to people why we got into this predicament, why we're now taking $7 million a year out of our general fund to, uh, to pay for these expenses, so, um, that's, that's all the questions are, I have, or statements I have at, at this time.
Okay. Commissioner Hunley?
So to follow in Commissioner Lapointe's questions, I guess I have some additional questions, because... First is, not, not fully being steeped in the history of it for the last 20 years, is it actually accurate that we saw it ticking down over 20 years? Or in 2012, when we changed amortization policies, all of a sudden that change makes a whole big amount of change, because if you're not spreading it out over 30 years, you're spreading it out over 15 years, you know, it, it changed the outlook fairly dramatically. I mean, my sense of it was that had to do, had something to do with why it became a headline very quickly, but I don't know if that's, that's not correct. So we, we were seeing it tick down.
When we reported to this commission on January 23rd of this year, we provided you a timeline of the Grand Traverse County's funding history.
Okay.
And if any of you remember that, um, we tried to put together for you a funding history and how it has gone down during a time period, and maybe some things that happened at that time, which would have caused that reduction in funding, uh, levels. And back in 1990, you, uh, the county was 101% funded. 1992, it was 82% funded. There, in one year, so it went from a 101 to 82. One of the big reasons for that change in, in funded position was you adopted a benefit multiplier that was greater than the previous multiplier, and it was adopted for all years of service, for all active members that have got that, that, that benefit. So it added a large amount of liability. So in one year, you went, whatever that math is, but I think it's like 19% funded in one year. Then, uh, then, then in 1994, you were down to 62% funded. You adopted multipliers that were higher than 2%, you went to 2.5 for some of yours, and then you had, uh, uh, in the, excuse me, in 1993, you adopted that 2.5 with an early retirement window and a COLA. So those were benefit improvements that happened. And so over those three years, you went from 101 to 62% funded, and then again in 94, you, you maintained 62% funded with more benefit improvements.
So I, I guess the thing that I want to be clear on is, the report that we got in 94 showed that percentage, or in 2012, when we changed the way, then we were looking at these things and those, you, you see what I'm saying? That the, the numbers would change if we were looking back and saying, oh, well, at that point it was, I just want to make sure that's the case.
And I want to add to that. Not only would the report tell you what your funded position was, that you would get a supplemental valuation when a benefit improvement was considered prior to it being adopted, or at the time it was adopted, to show the financial impact on, on the system of what that would be. So that you would know prior to the next annual coming out, what we would expect your funded position to be based on the current annual evaluation.
Okay. So the other thing I would throw out there is, a couple months ago, we had a, a study session, and we were evaluating, um, a software package that looked at, you know, trying to executive summarize the pension situation and being able to make, boil down information so that we could make, you know, sensible decisions. And, well, I hate spending money, I, that seemed like that one might be, if, if it is a, a good package as it seems to be, um, was just going to check in with the administration and see where that stood.
We are currently in discussions with Mr. Price, as recently as yesterday. We're working through the financial details of that package, number of years in the contract, how much it's going to cost, those kind of things. If you recall, he could not, at the time of his presentation, he did not have any base in Michigan.
Right.
So he was working on that, and I think that we're still waiting to hear from him officially if he can provide that service and when.
Any other commissioners? Tony, how long have you been with MERS?
12 years.
Okay. And I guess I'm just kind of asking for your perception. Would you say this board is more aggressive than the, the past boards you've seen in tackling this, or about the same?
I would say that this board has brought more money in above and beyond the required contribution than previous boards.
Okay. And, uh, I guess how many, how many pension systems are you overseeing or supporting?
MERS has about 710 or 12 groups that still have the defined benefit plan, and we have almost 900 groups that are in one of our plans that we administer.
Okay. And how many you personally support?
I'm, I'm responsible for about 140 communities in the northern part of the Lower Peninsula that I, that I, that I visit and, and talk to and counsel and review.
Well, is that communities or actual entities?
Entities, uh, local units of government.
Okay. Like, we have, you know, the Airport Commission is separate than the county.
That'd be one of them.
Okay. All right. And, um, on average, do you think we're paying more attention to this than average or less?
I would have to say that the Grand Traverse County file is the absolute largest file that I have, and if I had to bring it, my backpack's not big enough.
Okay. I guess what I'm really looking for is your perspective of this board. Are we addressing this?
Your attention to, to this pension, uh, debt and what you want to do, there has not been any local unit of government that has, that has paid more attention to it than Grand Traverse County in my region.
Thank you. That's important to me, because, uh, The Record Eagle printed a, well, I guess should say an editorial, which is an anonymous editor at the newspaper suggesting that we are not taking on this problem. We have to hear from our professional telling us that we're taking this problem on more than anybody else that he supports. That's important to me. Commissioner Lapointe?
Yeah, just, just a follow-up. I, you know, I understand, I was, I'm well aware of the changes that were made to the pension plan that caused liabilities to shoot up in, in those years. And you can see it, I've got before me a spreadsheet that shows year by year, the ticking down of the, uh, of the, the funding from a high, actually 142% in 1987, and it just goes down, down, down. But clearly, when those actions were taken to increase the multiplier and, and the COLA was inserted, et cetera, everybody knew that that would have a dramatic impact on the liability side of the equation, correct?
I, I can't tell you what people, uh, knew, I can tell you what we provided them. And so I, what they're... And so, what their comprehension level is, I can't tell you that. But we provided the data that would show that liabilities would go up.
Either they comprehended it and chose to ignore it...
Excuse me?
Either they comprehended it and chose to ignore the impact, because they certainly didn't fund accordingly. That got us, I mean, you see these huge drops that you mentioned, year by year of the funding. It's just, it's just a shame that we're, the citizens now are paying for the overs, the lack of oversight that took place when all of these changes were made, that drove the liability side way up, and they did nothing on the asset side to, to counter that. So, we'll continue to watch it. My, my take is to watch it. I'd like to get a, somehow get a picture. Are we on target, or how far are we off-target for making our goal of being 100% funded in 2034, when many of us probably won't, won't be on this board? But hopefully, whoever continues to, to watch that. But it's, it's hard to pick that out, our, where we stand on our new slope, if you would, out of the report that we get. So, maybe Dean or, or, I don't know, the two of you could kind of take a look at that and see, is, are we on?
I think there is some, there is documentation in the actuarial valuation, but you look at the funds that are in the surplus division, and maybe Tony can comment on that. The amount that's over and above the actuarial determined contribution, whether that's a minimum payment or not, it's actuarially determined, I'm not an actuary. But we have funds in our surplus division, which are the amounts that are over and above that have been paid in. We just made a $750,000 contribution on, I think, August 21st, which is half of the additional 1.5 that's going to be put in. So, I'll hand that off to Tony.
I will, I will agree with you on this, Commissioner LaPointe, that, and thank you, Dean, for asking me to clarify this a little bit. The annual report is used to tell the county what its minimum required contribution is. However, this county adopted, and it went into an agreement called an extended amortization policy with the previous board. And what, what that meant is, is that they were required to make a level payment of 5.9 million a year, or the minimum required contribution, whichever is greater. And so, what we have in this report is, we do not show in these graphical representations or these glide paths of when you'll get to 100% funded, what, that you're making that 5.9 million contribution. So, these, because, and when we do that, is because this is the, we're plugging in what the minimum amount is.
Okay.
And those assets that are greater than the minimum go into, as Dean said, the surplus funds division. And so, when we show these graphs, it's not showing that surplus dollars. You're getting credit for it, and it's in your asset balance when we talk about the overall funded position. But on this glide path, it does not show that, and it's for good reason. So that those groups that want to get to a higher percent funded without reducing what their next required contribution is to be, is going to be, they use that surplus funds division, as we explained in past meetings with the board. So, you have to then, if you wanted to put the two together, we would have to do some additional analysis for you, to show you what that would, what that would mean, and then where you would, where you would end up. The whole idea was that, when we went into this amortization extension agreement, is that number of 5.9 million made a lot of sense at that time, if all the assumptions were met. You'd pay in a little bit more than you needed to in those beginning years. Then your required contribution would be pretty much close to that 5.9. And then, with the remaining few years of that amortization period, the dollars that were in the surplus funds would then come out to supplement what your 5.9 payment is, plus the required amount. So that by the time you got through that 16-year amortization, you would have been 100% funded. And so, if these assumptions are met, and you continue to put those dollars in, you would be there. But we know that the assumptions have changed. And so, that's one of the reasons why you've put in additional dollars. And we've sat down with the administration, some of the commissioners, to say that we don't feel that, that, that projection that was provided when the 16-year amortization schedule was created, is actually going to follow because of these assumption changes. So, that's one of the reasons why this board has decided to put in more than that minimum requirement into the surplus funds division, so that they basically stay on track to move forward, even though these changes have happened.
Tony, can I just comment on the extension agreement?
Yeah.
There was, there was a chart, a CEDIS analysis, that was attached as incorporating the agreement. And on the actuarial accrue liability side of things, for 2018, that, that analysis provided in 2017 showed 2018 liability of about 98.2 million. What's reported in the 2018 report is actually less. It's 96.8 million. That's Table 7 of the report, if you look at that. Can you explain that, why the liability was, was thought to be greater in 2017, but actually is, is less?
You made pension changes for the remaining members in the defined benefit plan, would be, and those were reductions in pension liabilities. That would be the biggest reason.
The multipliers were reduced going forward for a lot of the groups, 14 of the 20 divisions, which changes the growth in that future retirement payment.
You also make, I'm sorry, you're interrupting.
No, go ahead.
You also make changes in definition of compensation. So, therefore, you're, so one of the, one of the factors in figuring liability is final average compensation. Since you change your definition of compensation on a going-forward basis, the growth of FAC was limited, which would also reduce liability.
The other thing to highlight, too, is that prior years, the employee contribution was 10,000, 12,000. In this report, it's about 65,000. I mean, that's pretty significant change as well, correct?
It is. You have all but three divisions paying for their, for, you know, cost sharing, some of the cost of their benefit. And, you know, I know that you're, those are three other divisions that may end up having to have changes to their contributions as well.
But that's not going to be super significant. It's a 50,000 increase on a $7 million payment. I mean, it's good, but it's not, it's not going to be, make a dramatic change. Just one other quick one. You're talking about surplus fund, and I understand how that works. But that's counting, when, when it says here that we're 48% funded, the surplus fund is included in the asset base, to come to that number.
I don't know what the 48% number is. It's 53% funded.
53% funded. We're 48% actually...
Based on market value.
Based on market value, we're 48% funded, 53%.
Commissioner LaPointe is looking at the numbers in the 1231-18 valuation, so he's talking about market value.
So, you're talking about market value?
Yes.
The, the, the report, the annual actuarial valuation provides an actuarial number, and that actuarial number is 53%. If your market number's 48%, they're the same number.
Okay, well, yeah, but they're working out the same words just entered. Okay, one uses smoothing, one...
Correct.
Exact market. Well, my question's the same. If we went with 53%, the 53% calculation, like, the surplus fund dollar amount is, is calculated into that, correct? I mean, it's not, it's not...
Correct.
Money that's sitting over here that we threw in, would get a dramatic impact. The 53% represents the money in the surplus fund.
Correct.
So, the surplus fund, just isn't allocated to one of the divisions.
Correct.
It's weakened, okay. So, it's, it's...
Just for reference, based on the quarterly statement that goes through June 30th of 2019, the funds that we have in that surplus division are a little over $4 million. It's $4,099,000.
But we shouldn't get...
It's just a reference point.
At first, I thought, at one time, sometime, that the surplus fund was outside of this, and we could just throw it in, and we'd jump up to a higher number. But it's included, it just hasn't been allocated to a division.
Correct.
Is all the surplus fund is.
Okay. Any other staff response to this question?
I'd like to make three points while Tony's here. First, thank you for the discussion on the amortization agreement. Again, that in and of itself is supposed to give us a guideline on how to get to where we need to be at 100% funded by 2034. I would think that it's safe to say we're on track with that. The other piece of that is, we are not paying, our payment is not based on a 7.75% rate of return, or a 7.35% rate of return. Our payment of $7 million that this board approved this year is higher than the 5.75% assumed rate of return. So, in your, on page four in the valuation, there's a comment by MERS that says to accelerate to 100% funding ratio in 10 years. The estimated monthly payment would be 509,496, which is roughly equivalent to 6.1 million. So, that's in 10 years. They're saying in 10 years, if you pay 6.1 million annually, you're going to be paid off in 2028.
At their seven and three quarters.
At 7.3, well, right now, seven and three quarters, but 7.35, starting next year. We're paying 7 million. So, I think the board has acted extremely appropriately and responsibly in trying to increase the asset base, along with decreasing the liability associated with the pension. We've tackled it pretty well. I think we've made some very conservative swings at this. But I want to know from Tony, what is your relative level of confidence in that comment on page four? How do you derive that?
So, that's if all assumptions are met. And, and with, with that, we need to get our smooth rate of return up to that 7.35 next, you know, within next year. That's probably going to be hard when you only get...
But knowing that we're making a payment based on 5.75%...
Correct.
Are you still standing, would MERS still stand by that concept, that within 10 years, if we continue to fund at the level we're funding, in 10 years, that we should be paid off?
Yeah, that's going to... I'm going to say that you're going to, you're going to keep moving in that direction. You're going to have some liabilities that are going to either grow faster than we thought, maybe not. You're going to have assets that grow faster, or maybe not. And so, with that said, you're, you've, you're addressing what we've recommended. Put more money in than the minimum required contribution. Will you be close to that? Yes. Can I say absolutely it's going to happen? I don't have that crystal ball. But am I confident that if, in the, if, if, if I could say, well, in the long term, absolutely, but you're giving me 10 years, and so, these, these assumptions don't fall into place in just 10 years? But you're going to be real, you're going to be in a much better position 10 years from now than, than you are now. And if not fully funded, you're going to be real close. And depending on what happens to liability, who knows? It could be going to be better.
Can I just, a question on the liability? No matter, no matter what the assumption is, if it's 5.75, 7.75, 8, whatever it may be, all the analysis that I've seen shows the liability, it always drops, starting in about four years from now. It's, so it looks like a bell curve, where we, where we hit the peak within the next year or two, and then we begin to, to drop. I mean, is that, is that inaccurate?
It's absolutely correct, because you're a closed system, and you've been closed now for, what, 18 years? And so, what you're finding is that many of your legacy costs, or those former employees, retirees, your commitment to them is being fulfilled through their, by their lifelong benefit being no longer needed, because they're not with us. And you're finding less members, you only have, I think, if I add it up correctly...
52.
52, 51 remaining active members in the plan. And you can see that as the years go by, like you said, it's, you're about peaking, and then you're going to start to come down.
And in the peak, again, the peak is a little less today than what was forecasted in '17.
Okay. Commissioner Wheelock?
Where to start? You know, I guess, you know, it's easy to blame previous boards of how they've handled this. You know, I've contended for a number of years that MERS should take some responsibility for this situation, too, which they choose not to. In 2001, the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners deemed that defined benefit programs were not sustainable. We stopped them for all new hires in 2001, with the exception of the circuit court. We now, very recently, got rid of the circuit court as having that benefit. But because they are co-employees with the judges, and the judges would not allow for the change, the circuit court remained on a defined benefit program till 26 through '16.
I see.
You know? Every year, we get the actuarial report. As we have heard here this morning, it's a very complex, complicated document to try to read and get an answer, get a handle on what's in it. You know, every year, MERS did an actuarial, says your amortization period is, well, it was 30 years, and then it dropped down to two years every year, to, down to 12 or something like that at one point. And if you make this payment, you will be paid, be paid off. We always made that payment. We had a three-year period where we, we asked in 2008, 2008 through 2011, to freeze that because of the economy. We did not have the extra money. We froze that payment for three years. But every year, MERS did an actuarial. They did an evaluation that said, based on your amortization schedule, you need to make X number of dollar payment. Up until 2012, the word minimum had never been, never even been in the report. I didn't, don't think I caught the word minimum until about 2015. So, you know, maybe I, I read a couple of reports that didn't see the word minimum in that, in that contribution. But the bottom line is, MERS did the evaluation. They said, based on your amortization schedule, this is the payment you need to make. We, every time, made that payment. You know, should we have tracked it better? Probably yes. Should MERS, as our advisor, help to inform us better? Absolutely. You know? And they're not going to take any responsibility for this. So, it's real easy to blame county boards. But, but the bottom line is, this is where we're at. How do we move forward from here? You know, the liability that MERS evaluates bases, is based on the fact that every person that ever was employed by Grand Traverse County and became vested is going to draw maximum benefits until they're 88.6 years old, or whatever the, the life expectancy is in this, in this report. That's not going to happen, because not every one of those employees will ever, will ever draw, some of them will never draw a dime. You know? So, I always contend that the liability number is wrong. And, you know, I've seen some reports that say that, I've seen them as low as 68% is adequately funded. Most of them will tell you about 80% is about the maximum you'll ever pay out, 80 to 82%. You know? So, yes, it's a good idea to talk about a goal of being 100% funded, but we're never going to need 100% of that money. You know, we can, we can sit here, and we can talk about this all day, and we can talk about the complexities of it. But, but the bottom line is, we pay a professional company to manage our benefit program, and at least in my perception, they didn't do a very good job of it for a long time. Well, you know, we're now maybe in a little better pace. You know, Tony's been here, you know, relatively new, you know, only a little, less, about half the time that I've been here. So, the, but the bottom line is, you know, the company that we were paying to manage our pension debt, in my mind, did not do their job either. You know, should we have tracked it closer? Absolutely. But the bottom line is, the company that we were paying to manage the debt didn't do their job.
Commissioner Close?
Tony, is, is it, is it true that when the employee that's receiving the benefit passes, the benefit is no longer being paid? Or are there, are there benefactors out there that, that are going to be getting paid after the person passed?
The defined benefit plan offers a payout of their benefit, and they can, they have some choice in how that benefit is going to be paid out. Now, keep in mind that in the state of Michigan, a retirement benefit is, is basically marital property. So, therefore, unless your spouse signs off, you're required to keep your spouse as a beneficiary in the case of your death. And therefore, the answer to your question is, if it's a married person who's retiring, then unless they, their spouse has signed off, it's going to continue on past their death, if their spouse is still alive. if their spouse is still alive. If their spouse predeceases them, then no. If their spouse signed off, and they went straight life, when they die, it, it ceases to be given to them. There's also, also another option that's called period certain. So they can write, they can decide that they're gonna get this benefit for a number of years. And they will get that benefit for life, unless they die sooner than that period certain. So if they pick the period certain 20, and they only live 15 years, the remaining five years will be paid out to whoever they designated as their beneficiary that wasn't a spouse or someone else that they chose. Or would you go on for life? When we figure that benefit, it is actuarially calculated that it is the same amount of benefit paid out over a longer number of years. So when that benefit is going to be shared with a spouse or with a beneficiary, there's a reduction in what would be called the straight life benefit, because we're covering more than one life. Over the, over the average of that, actuarially, it'd work out to be the same payout.
Thank you.
But the, but the key point of that discussion is the fact that if, if that payout is going to go for a longer period of time, the monthly payout is, is paid out at a lower rate. The, you don't pay out the 70% of the average final compensation every month through the whole thing. That X number of dollars is there, is deemed how that is being paid out over the projected payout period, whether it's for that person's life expectancy, or he and his spouse, or whoever his beneficiary may be. You know, we have, you know, I'm sure we have employees that have children listed as a beneficiary. So, so their amount that pays out per month is reduced significantly based on the life expectancy of that child who is the, is the beneficiary. So, you know, it's not like that person is going to draw their full benefit at, at a percentage of their final compensation every month, and then their child is going to be, draw that money at that same rate. The, the total amount of money that they're going to be paid out does not change. It's just how it's paid out, how much it's paid out changes, based on who the beneficiary of the program is.
Okay. Commissioner LaPointe?
Just a follow-up on Commissioner Wheelock's talking about the, on the liability side. There's the two sides, the asset side, liability side. The fact that we've only got 50 or so active participants, I would, I would think the variable, because you don't know what the asset side, you don't know what the return investment's gonna be, you don't know some of the things, how long people are gonna live. But I would think that the variable on the liability side is extremely small compared to the variable on the asset side. Because, I mean, you have all this data on people's age, the type of policy they chose, whether their spouse, if their spouse is, gets a carryover which reduces their payout, or you know the age of the spouse, if it's the child, you know the age of the child. So I, I would think, you'd almost be spot-on, pretty much on the liability side, and the biggest exposure we've got on a, on a change that could change our trajectory or change our plan, is not on that side, but on the asset side. Is that correct?
I would have to have the actuaries do an analysis to see what, which has a greater potential variance in that. I understand where you're coming from, that because you can have 50-point swings in, in the market, like you did-
People that do actuarials for insurance companies, I mean, they'll be out of business if they're not dead nuts on, pretty much. So, and I would think you, the firms that are doing your actuarials-
I, I understand your question. What is the probability, though, of having a 2008 market loss? I don't know what that is, do you? And that's why I can't tell you what the probability of market swings are gonna be, because you're asking me, what's the probability of market swings and liability? I don't know what the probability is in market swings. Yes, we know that they're absolutely-
You have, you have no control over the market.
No.
You have a lot of control over, of the calculations of the actuarials, because you're looking at a, a database of-
Correct.
-facts, and hopefully whoever's doing the actuarial work for you is, I mean, plus, minus, has better be pretty damn close.
You're still asking a question of, I mean, if I could predict the market?
I'm not asking you to predict the market. I'm, I'm saying, the market's out of your control, pretty much, what it does. But on the liability side, which is the other side of the equation, you better be, that's in your, pretty much in your control in how, that's not variable like the market picks it.
I, I, that's an analysis beyond my scope.
Okay. That's, I'm, I'm surprised on your answer.
Commissioner Wheelock?
One thing we have to remember too is, 500 of our Grand Traverse County employees are not affected by the defined benefit situation, because they're not involved. You know, we, we have 50, 51, 52 current employees that's still on that program, and somewhere, there's a number of how many former county employees are, are driving benefit from the program. But, but the fact is, is that significant changes were made a long time ago to ensure that this was not an ongoing problem. It, while it's, you know, it's ongoing for 30 years, it's not in perpetuity that we would have had, had we not made the changes that we did in 2001.
Well, my, my perspective is, the change in 2001 was significant, and I, you know, I give credit to that board. It took 17 years to fully take effect, because we still had people being hired into that program. And I think the pension liability, the unfunded, doesn't directly affect them, but it does affect the overall finances. It does affect adding staff and giving raises, because we have to focus on this debt. If we weren't paying $4 million a year towards people that have already provided services, that money would be going into the county staff and providing services, expanding services for our residents. So. Any other questions for Tony? All right. Tony, thank you so much for being here. I'm sure we'll have some more talks.
Thank you for having me. It's been my pleasure.
Thank you.
And I will, I will get you those appendix. I'll, I'll email that over to you.
Could you email them to all the commissioners? Sorry.
I will.
Yeah. Thank you, Tony.
When is the 2018 numbers coming out?
Consolidated.
That you publish for all of your entities?
Octo-
October?
All right. Let's take a couple-minute break. We'll come back in about three to five minutes.
We're going to call back to order. This is the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, September 4th. Coming back from recess. We are on item eight, which is items removed from the consent calendar. We'll take them in order they appeared on the consent calendar, starting with A received. Commissioner Klaus had requested we pull the Traverse area district library regular minutes of June 20, 2019. Page fourteen in the packet. This is a receiving file item. Commissioner Klaus?
On page sixteen, I see where the library board supported a contract with Spence Brothers for $360,000. And it says to determine how to remediate the roof icing problem. I know that the library's been there for a while, but the icing problem would have been there the first year. Which, I mean icing problems, if the construction's not proper, the design's not proper, icing is right away. I would be surprised that they didn't get ahold of the contractor, the architect, at that time and get it taken care of. I know that that board is taking care of an issue today. I don't have a problem with that. I just have a problem with ice on a roof that shouldn't have been there to start with. So with that, I would move to receive regular minutes of June 20th. Support?
Motion by Klaus, supported by Jewett, to receive and file. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. For an item A six from the consent calendar, airport governance advisory committee minutes, July 30. And also north, item A seven, northwest regional airport commission minutes of July 30. Commissioner Hundley?
Right, so thanks. On the advisory committee minutes, item four in the minutes, talked about presentation of the advantages and disadvantages of commissions and authorities. And just if there is, you know, any kind of presentation, PowerPoint or anything that comes with that or as part of that, I'd love to have that reach the board here for us to look at.
Certainly, any information that that board is, or that committee is viewing will be available. And we can put together a packet of all the meeting packets. This board appointed a committee of Commissioner LaPointe, myself, and our administrator as our advisory committee on the topic. The airport board appointed us three to their advisory committee, so it's like a joint committee almost. And before any decisions made at this level, we will certainly bring back all of the things we've been hashing out and hopefully an executive summary of those, but also as deep as you want to delve into the topic as we've discussed.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it just, that one especially, I feel like, I envision what the regular order of things would be. You guys would meet until you have some recommendation. You'd send us a recommendation and then there's a whole bunch of stuff for us to review in the one packet. And I'd just love, if you have it in real time, to get some earlier.
I've got copies of all of those. I'll send everybody a copy of all the presentations we've received.
That'd be great, thank you. And with that, I mean, I can do both of them at the same time. So let me skip to the airport minutes. And then, let's see.
Page twenty-eight.
Yeah, on page.
Can I just weigh in? I have a suggestion. You can also, I've requested to get all of the packets sent to me. I can't come to all the governance committee meetings, but then you can see all of the presentations as they are being sent to the whole board as well. So just for future.
I'll do that, too. Thank you. And then, on the airport, on page twenty-nine, item two, it was moved, oh, yeah, the energy assessment and renewable energy roadmap report. I'm guessing that the answer is going to be, it's already on their website with the information from the meetings there. But that looked like an item I'd love to know more about. I don't know if it's something you guys.
So the, you're talking about the solar panel project?
I assume that's what it is. It says, so, it was moved by Commissioner Forster and supported by Commissioner Coco to accept the TVC energy assessment and renewable energy roadmap report.
Okay, yeah, so, and that is something the airport administration staff is working out with Traverse City Light and Power. They're kind of going back and forth, looking for how this might work out. And then, as I've said before, the airport does not want to own solar panels. They're looking for someone who wants to lease the land for the purpose of solar panels.
And I mean, it sounds like from the titling of that, it's kind of an overall assessment of the energy that the airport needs and how to. So, I mean, it looked interesting and I'd love to know more.
Yep, so as part of that process, there is an expenditure for consultation, someone to work through the process of getting that land released by the FAA so that it's available, because no one wants to go apply for a loan, you don't even know the property's going to be available, so to speak.
Okay, and then on page thirty, item seven in new business, there was the voluntary acquisition of new property, which looks like it's on the other side of South Airport Road.
Yep, so that's across the road from the airport. And basically, the FAA requires that the airport make a good faith effort to acquire properties adjacent to the current, I forget the word, fly zone, basically. There has to be fields beyond the runway in case there's ever a crash or, you know, something happens, you know, keep it clear so wildlife isn't there. So, somebody was putting up a house for sale and FAA requires us to make an effort to.
Oh, really?
Not all properties.
Right, not like all the way.
They define certain areas, which, you know, I've only been on the board this year, but as far as I can gather, at some point, that wasn't within the no-fly zone. They expanded that a little bit, so now it is, so they have to make an effort to purchase those properties.
Okay, cool. Those were my questions. With that, I would move to accept and receive both the advisory committee minutes and the airport committee minutes.
Support?
Okay, moved by Commissioner Hundley, supported by Commissioner Wheelock to receive and file the airport's governance and Northwest Regional Airport Commission minutes from July 30th. Further discussion?
Yeah, I was actually going to ask if seven be, that's okay, seven be pulled as well. And I just, it was, I was curious about the seven eighteen dual road. Can you just give me, do we know what's the size of that property that we're looking, that the airport is looking into potentially buying? Any idea of acreage and?
I looked it up on my maps program and it's like a residential lot.
Okay.
If I remember right, it was less than an acre.
Okay.
So it's kind of like when these things come up for sale, if they're in that zone?
It's an old.
Try for it.
Yeah, it's an old house, us lab, I believe. That, you know, the folks are moving and, yeah.
Okay.
That was what I wanted to find out, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. For an item B two, fiscal year 2019 budget amendments, page thirty-six in your packet. This is pulled by Commissioner Klaus.
The, I guess I'm just asking a question regarding the budget amendments for, it'd be page forty, forty-one, forty-two. It'd be the Duck Lake level, Silver Lake level, and Old Mission drain. Are we on target to have those assessments completed and receiving money from the winter taxes?
That's my understanding. We are working with, you have resolutions later in your packet that reaffirm the lake levels. And we are meeting with the drain commissioner later this week, but we've met with Scott Howard. That is the process to have those districts and the levies created. We're working with the GIS and equalization to make sure that we have the properties, but yes.
And this is being done based on our, the audit?
Well, it's related to that. The state wanted to see budgets for, the deficit elimination plan that I asked you to approve earlier didn't address the 2019 expenditures. These budget amendments provide funds for postage, mailing, the attorney fees that will incur to establish what it is, you know, what we need to do to have those levies in place to go on the December tax roll. And there are three. The first one on page forty is for Duck Lake. And then there's forty-one is Silver Lake, Lake Level, and then also forty. There are sufficient funds in the Cass Road drain budget to do that work without having an amendment. But the state did want to see the amended budgets, and you'll see that later in the deficit item.
Thank you. So with that, I would move to approve the budget amendments for year 2019.
Support?
Moved by Klaus, supported by Kaffia. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. We're on item B three, commission on aging point of service contract renewal for Northern Lakes Community Mental Health. Page forty-three in the packet, pulled by Commissioner LaPointe.
I had an opportunity to speak to the director during the recess and got my question answered. And so I'll move to approve the commission on aging point of service contract renewal with Northern Lakes.
Support?
Moved by LaPointe, supported by Jewett. Further discussion? Just curious, would you like to share your question or answer with us? No?
Basically, my comment was, this whole area, being a new commissioner, is very confusing. I also sit on the DHHS board, and that's very confusing. I've told them to stop, or asked them to stop using the acronyms, that, you know, they all speak amongst themselves and they know the business inside and out. And you're sitting there, and the same with this, these different organizations. I mean, there's just a lot of resource spent in these different organizations. And it's certainly as a new commissioner, it's not clear how this all works seamlessly and efficiently. So we talked about it a bit, and perhaps I'll sit down with her and try to better understand it. Because a lot of that comes to this board for approval, and I hate to just rubber stamp things, but I'm basically rubber stamping things, just so the public knows on this. So, that was all.
Yeah, perhaps our next board resolution will ban all acronyms. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, I believe we're done with the consent calendar. We're on department items, nine A, one, equalization, GIS updates, page ninety-eight in the packet. What does GIS stand for?
GIS stands for geographic information systems. Jim Baker, Director of Equalization and GIS. I apologize for the relatively short notice of this request and want to give you some background that leads to this point. The first I became involved with the building codes project was at the kickoff meeting on April 1st of the spring. Prior to that, I knew that GIS needed some maintenance and we were working with IT to obtain the proper SQL that was required to maintain what we were doing. But at the April 1st meeting, I realized that not only did we need to maintain our GIS infrastructure, but we actually needed to upgrade it a little bit to correspond with the EnerGov system that we're purchasing for the building codes project. Since that kickoff meeting, IT and GIS have been researching our options. And through an extensive RFP process, you know, we're making this tactical recommendation today to accomplish part of your strategic goals of streamlining the permitting process. We chose the OHM advisors and we actually have Craig and Larry from that organization here today. In the proposal, I don't know if you've noticed, but there was originally a mid-September date that OHM had agreed to be project-ready for the EnerGov system. Our timeline has changed. Part of that was due to the consultant that was hired. And now we're looking at a late November date and to be project-ready for the EnerGov system. And that was agreeable with the advisors. So that is one change in your proposal, that it's on page five of the proposal where that September date was acknowledged. And we are looking at a late November date of 29th now. And I respectfully ask for your support to move forward on this.
Okay, Nate, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah, Jim, could you give them a little bit of history as to, you know, why we need this upgrade? The fact that we have a lot of data that has to be focused and be a little more user-friendly, perhaps?
Yeah, the upgrade is actually going to build into the system a local government model. And actually, I would refer to Larry right now if he'd help me out with this question.
Larry Lacrosse, OHM advisors. Your system right now is a little outdated and it needs to be upgraded. That's the biggest thing. It's built on a infrastructure that's outdated also. And as you know, software needs to be upgraded as you move along. You're implementing EnerGov, which has a minimum requirement of getting ESRI to, or the GIS to a certain version. So that's what we're going to do. The old GIS that you have right now is built on older servers, an older version that can't really be shared out with the public. You're looking to enhance your parcel viewer a little bit better, make it more user-friendly. Some of the technology is moving so fast and we just need the GIS to be up to a level that can be compatible with these third-party software. Thank you.
I did dig into this one personally a little bit, and I wanted to commend staff. This is exactly the direction I think this board has been giving them. They found a way to do this without general fund dollars. We set building permit fees based on expected expenditures. Our staff has been extremely frugal and there's money in that to pay for this, because it does provide benefits to those who'll be, you know, getting permits and building and such. So this looks like a good project to me. Any other questions? Commissioner LaPointe?
The building code aspect of it, just a question, that was touched on, and anything we can do to streamline that process? I think a number of the commissioners have said that that's a major objective. And I know there was a meeting recently with some of the townships who get involved in permitting, et cetera, et cetera. Is that all been, is that, have they all bought into this? And are they willing participants? And are they going to be expected to?
That's going to take some time.
Yeah, no, is the short answer.
Well, I guess the question is if they don't buy in, is this still a valid project?
Yes, it is. I can tell you this, we bought, we moved to Tyler because we wanted to solve some deficiencies within Grand Traverse County's construction code office and within Grand Traverse County. This upgrade is necessary to make that move the best it can be. Whether or not the townships join us in that effort and recognize the efficiencies of our permitting process as we are defining currently, that's up to them. We had a conversation with them last week. It was a good discussion. They're intrigued by it, but to say that they are jumping on board at this point would be not quite accurate. We are going to partner with one township to kind of drive this a little bit, to see what that permitting process looks like. There was no township official that was saying this isn't going to work or we're not going to participate. They just aren't there quite yet.
But my question is, if they don't get there, this is still pays dividends and is a worthwhile project?
Yeah, we see that if you're applying for a building permit, say you're building a new home, that's going to be reviewed by at least three different county departments. So we see still efficiencies within the county. And the goal, hopefully, instead of taking a month or five weeks to review a permit application, even if we just focus on the county's internal departments, there's going to be some efficiencies gained and the review time is going to be a lot quicker.
It is safe to say, and this is what I've heard Mr. Baker say, is that we have a lot of information. You know, a lot of GIS information that has been somewhat gathered over the years by Ernie and others. And it's just not in its best usable format. So this upgrade is going to take all that information and make a stand-up GIS system for everybody to use. Is that a fair assessment of that?
Very good.
So this, well, actually, this is a consulting contract to assist in the implementation of this piece of software, Environ Gov? Is that what this?
No.
This is a consulting contract to stand up the GIS system so that it's ready for things like EnerGov. And it will actually assess the needs of other departments other than building department. And like Larry said, it'll actually stand up a new public face. Also, the LEA system that we had to go to when I inherited the GIS department back in 2016, I recognize was very old and we want to update the face to the public, too. Some of this actually takes care of some things that Ming has an issue with, and she can actually speak to that.
Can I? GIS and the construction code project is just kind of bread and butter, because without GIS, construction code's not going to work. So what happened with the GIS platform right now, since I first started in two years ago, which is you, we all know that we replaced a server, which is our data center, because it's all day and also is max out our capacity. So doing so, last year, we replaced the VSAN and actually last month, we just corrected SQL licensing. Now we're wedding, we have the backbone to support these two type of project. So for answering, so if the local agency were not able to, want us to, like, partner with us, and it's still, minimum will be four departments, including the county, all four departments for the permitting, it will already be totally offensively what we're doing right now. And for the GIS software, truly, we are almost like eight to 10 years behind. We need to get to, not just a cybersecurity standpoint, we need to have a better rep present. You know, security standpoint, we can provide a better service for, you know, not just the public and also the local government. And for GIS, we're able to stand this up, which is we will. The four department can share one map, instead way now is four different platforms, different interface, different software. And so integration will be there. So this project actually will be awesome if you guys support this. Do you have any question for that?
Thank you. Congratulations on your award of being in the.
Thank you.
The, what is the top, under thirty?
Under thirty would be nice.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Hundley?
So just to confirm my understanding, the scope of work for the $56,000, that is the implementation of it. It is the software itself, whatever, you know, product. And then I didn't see, actually, on annual ongoing cost, it has an NA. So like, is there an annual maintenance fee? Like, what else are we getting into?
Well, actually, this proposal does not include any software.
Okay.
We have a very robust software now. We're hoping, and again, Larry can speak to this, we're hoping that the software package we have now, I believe, is very underutilized.
Okay.
And once we get into the new SQL environment, I believe it will expand our ability with our current software. There is a possibility, when we do our needs assessment, that if we need to stand up the software and actually purchase a little more software to meet those needs, that's where we would be advised by Larry.
Okay.
So this is just an advisory only, and software would be later, and it would depend on who has a need for additional software later.
Okay. Commissioner Wheelock?
Well, first, I think I'll make the motion that we authorize the board chair and county administrator to effectuate the necessary documents to implement the board-authorized action in the contract with OHM.
Support. Okay, move by Wheelock, supported by Jewitt. Go ahead.
Discussion. Over the last couple of years, we've really noticed that with a very rapidly growing community, we're struggling to get the plan reviews done, getting the permits issued and those kind of things. We've talked about that many, many ways, trying to figure out how to make that better. A year ago, we purchased the Tyler system, and I think what we've discovered in trying to implement that system is that we simply didn't have enough horsepower. So I believe that this proposal gives us the horsepower we need to implement that system. You know, I think we bought the right software. I think we had the right plan. We just didn't have enough horsepower to run it. And we didn't have enough people trained well enough to be able to implement it. Anything that we can do to streamline that whole permitting process is going to benefit everyone in our community. You know, the, you know, I'm sure Ron can tell you the horror stories, you know, and so can every other contractor I deal with, you know. But the bottom line is, you know, they, we need ways to streamline that system. We bought the right software. We just didn't have the horsepower to do it. This gives us the horse, or this gives us the implementation and the horsepower to do it, and the training ability to make it work.
Okay. Commissioner LaPointe?
Taking a cue from Commissioner Wheelock, I would hope going forward that if anybody presents a software package, the easiest thing to do is buy the software. You know, we wouldn't be the first one to buy a piece of software and have it sit on the shelf or be half-implemented years, you know, after the acquisition. So I would hope going forward, if ever we buy a software package, we put together the entire cost of the consulting that's involved, the training that's involved, et cetera, et cetera. Because it's too easy to come in and sell a product, say it's only $20,000 in handling fees, $2,000, and to implement it, oh, by the way, you find out years down the road, it's $100,000 bucks. So it's, in my mind, really key going forward, any of the stuff that we install gives the whole picture. The other comment on that is, in looking at the vendor rating comparison, obviously, you gave a spec to the consultant saying, this is what we want to accomplish, and they gave a fixed fee to implement it. A question I would have, a concern I would have, is we gave a spec out, and we got proposals back from different companies that ranged from $24,000 to a high of $219,000. Either they didn't understand the spec, or can you comment on how we could get back such a varied, very amount?
Sure. I anticipated something along those lines. Basically, I'll admit, part of this process, I wasn't quite sure of what I was looking for. And when we put out the RFP, we put out, maybe just to make an analogy, if I had a four-wheel-drive vehicle that I wanted lifted and made more trail-worthy and put out that RFP, I got everything from, hey, I just did it, to mine, I can do it for years, I didn't have any reference, or I can build these monster trucks that you can compete with in the monster truck competitions. They all gave me what I asked for, but to varying degrees. And I think the higher end, the reason their degrees were higher, was because they wouldn't take the time to actually come to our meeting and understand our community. So that's my answer.
You know, when you talk about GIS, you can talk about everything from environmental assessments, soils, land use, all kinds of different things, utilities. It is a, it's a monster if you don't really dial it in. I think we dial it in because, talking to Jim, talking to the people, I've had experience with the city of Traverse City. I've had experience with the county, worked right on their system. I kind of had a little advantage here, knowing what was inside and what we needed to do to prioritize this Intergov first, and then, you know, work along the lines of parcel viewers and those types of things. So, yeah, if you looked at the RFP, you could say, hey, this, I can build this guy a monster truck. And, you know, we went at it as, hey, let's give them what they need right now, and then move from there.
Thank you.
And I would like also to address, as far as planning in the future, you know, I think that we have done very well. Maybe this does appear as if it wasn't planned for. And I think as we build our team and we gel as a team, I think we'll be able to come up with better solutions. It's been a little rough the last six, seven years. So I think that going forward, you will see better solutions to this. And I do want to commend Ming for having a server environment that is ready for this project. We know of another large jurisdiction that we talked to that is, they're going to a Tyler Intergov system themselves. And they bought the product, and they're not going to implement as quick as we are. And it was basically because after they bought the software, they realized that their server environment and their hardware wasn't up to spec, and they didn't actually budget for that. So hats off to Ming to be ready for that. And again, I apologize that this was a spur-of-the-moment thing for GIS, and it, you know, going down the road as our team gels, we'll have better tactical solutions for you.
Well, in fairness, Jim, you had a new board this year, five new members on this board, and the budget was set by the previous board. You didn't know what our priorities would be. But coming in, we did give a priority that we want this stuff to be updated, and our interactions with people getting permits and building houses to be streamlined as possible. So I think it's fair for us to expect some stuff like this that wasn't thought of last year, but we said this year, this is a priority. Commissioner Klaus?
Jim, is this 46 or 56, 430, gonna take care of the job, get the job done? I see 418 hours allocated to it. I mean, are we on an hourly basis, or is this a fixed?
It's a not-to-exceed, and if they save time in one area, we may be able to use it in other areas, my understanding. And I honestly hope they use all of the hours, and I believe when they do, we'll be set.
And then also, I see on their client base that they've provided, there's no counties, but there are road commissions, there's villages, and you're confident that these folks can get the job done for you?
I heard back from four of the five references, and even though it appears as if maybe what they're doing for us isn't represented in the RFP, through speaking with four of the five references, ultimately, in the conversation, they did GIS work for them also.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, comments? Okay. Motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Okay, we're in item 9B1, Veterans Affairs, Veterans' Milage Request, page 130 in the packet.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we levy a tax of .08 mils of the maximum, .1179, which is a reduction of the milage rate to fund the Veterans Department. And I would commend the department for their efficiencies, that we've been able to get this done, and save the taxpayers of this community money.
Support.
Moved by Wheelock, supported by Brad? I don't know why I'm getting brains off, this must be the weekend. Comments, questions?
I think Mr. Roof would like to address the board a little bit on this, if he may be allowed to do so.
Everybody good with that?
Sure.
Awesome. So I did include what I was going to say in your packet. Really, it's just kind of going over the progression of the office in the last two, almost two years that I've been there. You know, I wanted to thank the taxpayer for passing our milage because that helps us budget a little more level-headed within our office or any other department that does that. In 2016, when it was passed at .12 mils, it provided our department with about $545,700 for the 2017 year. We also have contract at that time with Benzie County and Leland County to provide veteran services. That equaled a little over $77,000. And as of last year, we no longer have a contract with Benzie. They went off on their own, and they have staff that provide services for their veterans in their county. And our contract with Leland ends in December of 2021. Although we foresee that the leaders in Leland are being satisfied with their services, that's never guaranteed, that the contract could renew. A, because, excuse me, upon becoming Director of Veterans Affairs in 2018, I immediately made changes to the department to make it more efficient. These changes included the elimination of one staff position, as well as changing the role of another, higher salary to a benefit counselor, increased the number of clients assisted, as well as participating in various outreach events. Within six months, client appointment wait time went down from one month to just one week or less, and most walk-ins being able to be seen the same day. When I came into the position, or probably before, I had read articles of some of the issues with the office, and I had seen that there was sometimes a two-month waiting period to get into the office. And I was, that was one of my priorities, one of my committee priorities, that nobody should wait two months to get into our office to be seen. In 2019, the department has grown from only assisting veterans in the office to also providing weekly outreach events in Kingsley Library, Interlochen Library, Leland Government Building. Our department has been part of the community by having booths at National Cherry Festival, Northern Michigan Fair, as well as Grand Traverse and Leland Senior Expos. We've also been an integral part of growth by becoming a founding team member in the first official veterans treatment court for the 86th District. And now, actually tomorrow, we're seeking expansion into the Pishawby Town Native Tribe in order to provide benefits counseling, which, that's pretty huge because there's a large number of natives who are not getting any veterans benefits. Two years after the milage appropriations, there's a much clearer picture of what is needed for our departmental funding. By the end of 2019, our department will have a reserve fund of balance of approximately $450,582. Now, the reserve fund balance is due to operating more efficiently, adjusting our staffing plan, as well as additional revenue from contracts and grants. Because of the fact that the awarding of grants and contracts is never a guarantee, the milage amount should always ensure coverage of the annual budget. In May of this year, the milage rollback reduced it from the .12 to the .1185. Through multiple talks with County Administrator Nate, Finance Director Dean Bot, and my chairman, Art Eisner, it became apparent that our fund balance and increased funding exceeded our budgetary needs. In order to allow the greatest level of transparency and be the best steward of taxpayers' money, something our department continually strives to achieve, we respectfully request that this lower, milage be lowered to .8 until the expiration. And I've included the spreadsheet that shows the progression and what our fund balance would be at the end of 2022. Lowering the milage does not mean a reduction in services to the veterans in our community, but rather a chance to best serve at a level that is achievable, as well as be viable and, sorry, viable and fiscally responsible partner in our communal. We welcome anyone with questions, concerns to our office, as well as a continued discussion of what we could do next.
Commissioner Hundley?
So the two questions I would have are, one, if we reduce the rate now, given that the milage was passed, you know, by referendum, does that mean it can't go back up in the future? Like, once it's down, it's down? Or how does that work?
That is only for this period, which expires in 2022, where it would come up for a new term.
And I'm the new guy on the block, Commissioner, but at least every year, we fill out that L4029, and the board establishes that milage rate at that time.
And then my other question is, in a packet that we had some months ago, I can't remember if it was CMH, one of the things on our consent agenda just highlighted that in a county or a couple of counties downstate, they had effectively eliminated veterans homelessness in the entire, you know, region, which I remember us taking a moment to just comment and say, that was great. And so, full respect to your request, and full respect to everything that you're doing and to your efficiency, but I just wanted to throw the question out there is, are there other things that we haven't even been doing? Maybe it's outside of the purview of the Veterans Affairs, but are there other things that, you know, maybe we could do before we reduce the money?
Well, we are doing things without using money. Like, we took over a storage unit in our building that, when I came in, it was just all the excessive broken chairs and tables and stuff that had just been sitting there. We cleaned it out and took that over, and that's what we consider our community office. NMCAA comes in there two days a week and meets homeless veterans right there, instead of having to send them down to their office, or their guy sees them outreach in a coffee shop or anything else. He can meet them right there, bring them across the hall to us, and we can assist however we can or need to. And the other plan is to get other community partners that work with us for veterans to be in that office as well. So we're doing things that doesn't cost us any more money, that we would need more milage monies for, so.
Okay, thanks.
And to clarify, maybe, was it Grand Rapids that you heard about the homeless? And what it is, is they don't, I don't want to tell you they don't eliminate it. The word is a functional zero, to where within 30 days, a veteran is housed. So technically, they wouldn't be homeless for a year. Functional zero, get someone in from day one, and by 30 days, they're housed. So that's the goal.
Okay. Commissioner LaPointe?
Just to follow up on your question, they're restricted on what they can spend their money on. It's, they're very, the mandates from the state in terms of how they, what veterans qualify, et cetera, et cetera, and what they can spend their money on, and that type of thing. One comment I will make is that I've been on the Department of Veterans Affairs Board for six months, and I kind of was very vocal in what you alluded to in the previous administration, some of the issues they had. So, and I won't comment on what happened in the past, but my observation of Michael and his operation, very, very efficient, the reports that he generates, you know, is very good. I like to look at the data and the actual results, and he does provide that. And I suspect he carries that through in his operation. I know he's extremely active in Grand Traverse County in terms of ferreting out... ferreting out anybody who could qualify for a benefit of any sort and trying to get them their benefits. So he's very good in that regard. The thing that has always puzzled me, though, is that Michael and I have talked about it, is their focus is Grand Travis, and they're also handling Leland County in its entirety. And they have a person up there, is it one full day a week, or something like that?
Every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday. And if you look at the number of veterans in Leland compared to Grand Travis County, and the number of encounters isn't the right word, but the number of contacts, thank you, that they have with Grand Travis veterans is, it, I, something's going on in Leland where they're just not participating anywhere to the degree that they are in Grand Travis County. And I know you've made outreach up there, and I don't know what, that's always been perplexing to me, when you present the numbers, number of encounters you have with people from Grand Travis County versus Leland. And you've, I'm sure you've done outreach programs up there, but just haven't gotten the same effect or the same impact up there. Can, I'm just curious, is there any comment on why there's such a gap, such a difference in the support for residents of Leland?
Well, one thing I can tell you, Michigan, MVAA, which is the Michigan Veterans Affairs Agency, passed a law last year where Veterans Affairs for counties can get money, and it's basically unrestricted. They just took away, you can't buy vehicles with it. And we're actually putting a grant for 2020 together for us, and then I'll kind of work with Chet, the administrator in Leland, to help spend their money. It's all going to be for advertising, whether it be billboard, radio, paper ads, to spread the word more, even in Leland. They'll have their own budget to do their things, and our own budget to do ours. And as we know, the state hasn't passed a budget, so we don't know if it's going to be fifty thousand dollars each department or eighty thousand dollars. It just depends on what level they come up on. The governor has said two point one million, and the legislature's has said four point two. So it just depends on where that lands when the budget comes out. But probably in January, February, we're going to start a new outreach plan for up there as well. They have only about eighteen hundred veterans, and I'll tell you, the number of veterans that are snowbirds up there, we see a downtick in the winter, that they come back in April or May and say, I just got back from Florida, and I'm just reading this in the mail from December, because they don't have their mail forwarded. So I think that's a very small portion of it, but maybe some of them are taken care of. The VA puts out what's called the GDX, the General Demographics of Expenditures, and it tells you the amount of veterans that they have listed as veterans, and that would be anybody who came in for services, anybody who's enrolled in healthcare. Now, you take Joe Veteran, who got out of the military and never went to the VA for anything, that person's still not counted. So that's another reason why you're always doing outreach, getting people who have never been in the office. And let me give you a short example. I had a Vietnam vet who, at tax season, walked in my office, says, hey, can I talk to someone about benefits? And I said, sure. Have you ever been in our office? He says, no. He says, I was down getting my taxes done, and my accountant was going through my property stuff and says, well, are you a veteran? And he goes, no. What's that, what the heck's that got to do with my taxes? Says, well, if you're a hundred percent permanent total, you're exempt from paying property taxes. He goes, really? And she goes, well, yeah. And he says, well, I was in Vietnam. She says, well, I know Vietnam veterans who are exposed to Agent Orange. You should go up and talk to them. And that's how he had come to my office. He was like sixty-seven years old and never, ever been to our office or heard of any VA benefits, or even tried to get anything. So that one veteran right there would have never known of our services and not counted by the VA because he wasn't enrolled in anything. So that number is huge. So doing outreach all the time is really key, so.
Commissioner Koffea.
Just a follow-up to Commissioner Hunley's question as well. I just want to be clear, Michael, that is it the case that the milage is restricted such that you can't do anything further than what you're already doing in terms of veteran housing for veterans experiencing homelessness? Is there the capability within the funds that you have?
So we do help with some things for housing. We also utilize what's called the Michigan Veterans Trust Fund, which is, currently, it's over sixty-one million dollars. But all those funds are restricted, and technically, our funds are restricted to combat veterans, combat-era veterans as well. So if you have a peacetime veteran come in and need something, they probably would not get as much help. There are some housing things that we can help with. It's just, we can't help every veteran because of the war-era issue.
So with this milage that we're talking about, there is, there are additional things that your department could do on the issue of housing and homelessness?
Right. We have what's called the Veterans Relief Fund. So within that budget line item, we can spend it on basically whatever as far as financial need.
And how much, if you had to, like, give me an estimate of the number of homeless veterans experiencing homelessness that you see in your office, is that a substantive number of the people that you're working with?
I would say no.
Okay.
Because Tom, who works for NMCAA, he actually, in that agency, is given money by the VA for what's called the SSVF grant, sorry for the acronyms.
What does it mean?
It's supportive service for veterans and their families.
Okay.
The VA gives millions of dollars to nonprofits every year to tackle homeless veterans. And his job is to go out to the trails, go out to tent cities, ask around if they're veterans. I mean, he doesn't sit in an office, go, okay, come in, see me if you need help. He's out there every day tackling it, taking people to food pantries, to taking them to appointments if they don't have any other means of transportation. So that agency does a great job. So, in my opinion, we don't need tons of money for that aspect. Now, we do partner with him, so if they need to get someone into an apartment, they'll pay first and last month. And let's say that person has a outstanding electric bill from two years ago, and they can't get the electric turned on, they'll come to us and go, would you pay the ninety-eight dollars to pay his electric bill? Yes, we'll pay it. Boom. Get him in his house and get his electricity turned on. So there's ways. We work with each other, and that's just one agency. So we don't always, you know, foot the bill a hundred percent to get someone in a place, so.
Okay. Any further questions? Commissioner Wheelock?
You know, we always talk real well about how great a job we do here, and we absolutely do, and we continue to get better at it. Give us an idea what the federal wait time is for a veteran to receive benefits from the federal government, once we've identified them?
So if you're talking compensation, I tell people on standard six to eight months. And again, it always depends on the complexity of your claim, when you come in and how well you work with us, because someone can come in one day as a walk-in and say, I'm just here to see what I can get. Well, you don't have your discharge papers or all your documentation of your dependents and stuff, and they have to go get. But once they complete that process and have everything, I tell people six to eight months.
Well, that's getting better, because it was twelve to fourteen.
Yeah. And we've had people that, again, certain type of claims, three to four months, but not an average. I never tell people, for sure, you'll hear by this time. I tell people, eh, six to eight months is about an average, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, the motion is to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Koffea?
Yes.
Hunley?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your service.
Yeah, keep up the good work. All right. So we've lowered taxes. What else can we do in this meeting? Item nine C, Drain Commissioner, Duck Lake and Silver Lake Special Assessment Districts, page one thirty-four.
Steve's going to talk about raising some people's taxes.
That's right.
Good morning. Good morning.
That's his decision, not ours, though, right?
Yeah, I wish it was my decision. Before, there are two resolutions that need to be passed in order to move forward with the Duck and Silver Lake Special Assessment Districts. And right now, we're working with equalization, and I want to thank Jim Baker and his staff for their assistance in determining the number of splits in those, each one of those districts, and since 2009, and will be moving forward. I've been in touch with Heidi in the Treasurer's Office, and so we're looking at getting everything that she needs to her by the end of October. And it's going to include a day of review, so the property owners can come in and see what their assessments are, and maybe if they have an issue with the assessment, they can state that. And, but there will be, you know, a public meeting for those lake front property owners.
Do we need these separate, or can we just do them both?
I think we can probably do them both.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to reaffirm the Special Assessment Districts for both Duck Lake and Silver Lake as a means to finance the maintenance of the lake levels.
Okay. Moved by Wheelock, or supported by Jewitt?
Steve, there's significant change to the assessment role, if you will, particularly in the Duck Lake situation, correct?
I would say more in Silver Lake than Duck Lake.
Because I know initially, the original Duck Lake role did not include any of the interior property of the peninsula. It only included the lake front property. And I believe that assessment role has been changed now to include some of those interior lots also, correct?
Yeah, that was done before me, but yes, I believe it does. And it does secondary, those that have, it's called the secondary benefit, not the primary benefit. And so, yes.
Initially, with the original Special Assessment District that was formed in Duck Lake, none of the internal lots in Duck Lake Peninsula were included at all. And then we changed that a couple of years ago, but nothing ever moved forward to assess any money to that. So we now have to make sure that we have them all.
Yep, exactly. And that's set by an engineer, you know, not by the Drain Commissioner.
Commissioner Jewitt?
Steve, do we know how many property owners or properties we're talking about in each district, Duck Lake and Silver Lake?
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. I want to say several hundred, you know, approaching four to five hundred.
Okay. Can you get those numbers for us?
Oh, sure can, yeah. I mean, that's why I'm working with, again, I probably have it right here. I could probably search for it, but it would be better, but I've been working with, like I say, Jim Baker and his staff on this.
Right, okay. So you don't have a finalized number yet, or are you guys?
The number of property owners, you mean?
Yeah.
Not yet. I mean, it's, in fact, I was just emailing back and forth with equalization and Ross Hammersley from Olson, Bisdak and Howard, who's assisting us with this. And we need to sit down and find out where we're at, and I asked for that meeting today.
Yeah, thanks.
Do the public meetings have to be held prior to the establishment of the final role?
Correct.
So we won't have a final number until after those public meetings, right?
And we're going to be, each one of those property owners will be receiving a letter, a registered letter.
Okay. Commissioner Lapointe?
Why, once a Special Assessment District is created, what constitutes the need for an action to reaffirm it?
That might be better from an attorney, but I know it was already, you know, passed, but I'm not sure why you had to reaffirm it, you know?
Okay, again, the cost, well, let me back up. You create a Special Assessment District, and you put it in motion, and then you go through the process that you're going to go through, and the residents get, you come up with a cost.
Correct.
To manage it, whatever you have to do. And it gets put on the rolls, and for a fixed period of time, it's stated, here's the amount.
Yep.
And you expect to collect so much money.
Correct.
Have these been dormant? I mean, it's been created some time ago. Have they been dormant in terms of actually any billings or any costs?
Assessments.
Assessments being done?
Yes, the, I'm trying to remember when the last assessment was done for Duck Lake, but it's been over a decade. Yeah, nineteen seventies. I know it's been over a few decades.
Okay, so it's.
It was established in nineteen fifty-nine, and so what it was working off from was the, you know, like a set-aside fund, maintenance fund, that is restricted just for the maintenance purposes of maintenance and inspections, dam inspections. Once that money is run out like it did prior to, when I came into office, then you do a Special Assessment District to catch that back up and provide maintenance for the next decade, for the next ten years is what our goal is.
Okay, so with the numbers you've got here, that you're going to recapture, is going to cover the initial cost of the legal fees that you've put in here to do the, go through the process. And you talked about some mechanical devices for measuring water levels.
Lake levels, right.
And then there'll be a residual amount left over for day-to-day maintenance of, if you have to bring a contractor in to do something.
Correct. Right now, the triennial report that was done in 2018 stated some deficiencies in the dam area that needed to be addressed, and so we get bids for that, and this assessment will cover that work that is necessary.
Okay, and then I think, and I don't have it right in front of me here, but on the chart, you showed the payout in twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and it comes down to a, you've paid off, you've paid off the loan, or the monies, you know, the loan, but then you'll also have a reserve. I don't know if it showed it.
Exactly.
You'll have a reserve.
Yep.
Okay, that's on these two districts you're talking about here. We've got other drain districts.
Correct.
That were established years ago.
Right.
Probably are dormant.
Yes.
Are you going to institute to build up some funds, because if something happens and there's no money in that fund, you're going to come back to the county for a loan, and we're going to be back on this. So I'd like to think, and I'm sure you'd like to be totally independent and have reserves for every drain.
Most of the drains do have maintenance funds in there.
Okay.
And it's not unusual for a county to have a revolving drain fund of, you know, I've heard on average, about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what's in the revolving drain fund. What that allows is for the Drain Commissioner to be able to go into, let's say, a Drainage District that's being requested, and hire the engineer to do, you know, some of the preliminary survey work. And if it doesn't go through, you have a way of paying for that. So the revolving drain fund is usually, has some assets in it.
Okay. And if we went there, and I can understand the value of that versus trying to guess, you don't want to sit on taxpayer money.
Right.
Unnecessarily.
Correct.
But do we have a policy, if you're going to take money out of this revolving drain fund, that you will, in fact, within a time period, have a active assessment going to repay it?
I don't know.
I think that's where we fell by the wayside in the past. So I would, I don't know if it's appropriate here, but I think if we're going to act, if we're going to pursue that using the revolving drain fund, we have a well-spelled-out policy that before you can draw money out, for any Drain Commissioner to draw money out of it, within a certain period of time, the assessment will be put in place to repay it. So we don't get into the same trap again.
Yeah, I don't think there is a policy that I'm aware of. Do you know, Chris?
No, I don't think there's a policy. So, you know, I think that's a great suggestion that we can, we can work with Steve, and we can develop that policy.
Can we ask, I mean, so this doesn't fall through the cracks, ask staff to put something together that ties to any withdrawals from the revolving drain fund of, here are the, here are the requirements.
And again, you know, usually counties have a, you know, a little bit of a, again, some of your bigger counties, you know, on average, two hundred and fifty thousand. I don't see that as being necessary for Grand Travis, but I understand what you're saying. It's like, okay, it gives the Drain Commissioner the ability to be reactive and proactive, and then, like you say, have a policy in place.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think it's, I'd rather see that than just have a bunch of money sitting idle, where you can do this and put something in place. So, okay, thank you.
Good idea.
Okay, Commissioner Klaus?
Steve, we approved budget amendments today that require that we get the funds this year for those districts.
Yep.
Is your intention that we will be seeing those special assessments going out on this for the winter taxes?
For the winter taxes. I've been, like I said, in working with Heidi from the Treasurer's Office, and yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Okay, the motion is to approve both the Silver Lake and Duck Lake? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
So, then we have the revised deficit elimination plan on page 139.
The state requested or required additional information, which basically would include the 2019 budget, which was why I had budget amendments for three funds in the packet today. And then, they also wanted to see those budgets along with the revised deficit elimination plan. So, on page, Bonnie provided a revised page 140, which shows the detail of those anticipated expenditures for Duck Lake, Silver Lake, Old Mission, and Cass Road. And then, you'll see that it has how that, those costs are recovered through the special assessment over a three-year period of time. I did submit this information to the person that I'm working at with Treasury to make sure that this would pass their test. And he said, if the board approved this today, we would be, would be good. If we don't submit a revised deficit elimination plan for the drain funds, they can start withholding our state revenue sharing. They would withhold 25%. That's never happened in Grand Travers County, and I don't want that to happen here. So, along with the resolution, which would be certified by the clerk, if you do take that, that action this morning, I would also provide the budgets for Funds 639, which is the revolving drain fund, 839, which is the Silver Lake, Lake Level, Fund 841, which is the Old Mission drain, and then also Fund 842, which is the Cass Road drain. So, with that, I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
Okay, any questions or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the revised deficit elimination plan as provided by the Finance Director.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Wheelock, supported by Caffia. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dean. All right, and we are on item 9D, Facilities Management Mold Update, Verbal Hall of Justice. I'm gonna let staff present this and give us an update. I was approached at our, at our quick break by some folks that want to make a public comment. I didn't announce it at the beginning, but if there's no objection, I will allow that. Not a general practice, but in this case, I agree to do that if there's no objection. So, take it away.
Morning. I was asked to give a summary of the events that we've been doing, working with on the mold project to remediate down at the Hall of Justice. So, I put together, I have been keeping a running timeline. I just put it in your packet, along with a couple of other things. There's a chart on there, which has three different samples that were sent out to an independent lab down in Ann Arbor. The first one is, was the starting point from our first mold inspection for taking the samples. And then, the second two were finals from two different companies. So, I'll just start at the beginning. I was notified back on 5/9 that one of the employees was having some breathing issues in an area that had previously been treated last summer. There was a, it was a closed-in closet area. We had another company that is currently out of business. The owner passed away, went in, remediated any mold that was found, painted it, and we've been keeping an eye on that area. This office is right next to that cubby. Soon as I found out about this, I started asking some questions to try to use a systematic approach to attack any kind of mold issues and use a process. What I did find was there was a little bit that you could barely see behind the wall. So, at that point, I immediately ordered up a HEPA filtration system for her office that was brought in the next day while I was trying to find different people to come in and remediate the mold and actually get into this.
Mr. Berry, can I just interrupt you? I'd like to orient myself to where this is within the Hall of Justice. Where is this office?
This is on the northeast corner in the basement area, the old church section.
In the basement, okay, thank you.
So, half of it is under grade.
Okay. Thank you, go ahead.
With the three companies, I called right away, only one company could come in immediately and start this process. As a matter of fact, one of the companies, the soonest they could get in was actually yesterday. So, everybody is extremely busy. I'm not sure why up in northern Michigan, but it is what it is. Throughout these inspections, with Floodman, inspections were taken over 15 different samples in different areas. We actually pulled back drywall, looked behind it, took physical tape samples, and sent all those out to the independent lab down in Ann Arbor. This took time to cultureize the mold, identify what types of molds they are, and then, when we received the inspection report back, that was approximately the 17th. Then, we reviewed it on the 20th and came up with a scope on what we were going to do to move forward to remediate all these issues. 5/27 work began. We put in dust containment, closed off that area. People were moved, and a 24/7 air scrubber was put in place to take care of any molds that had migrated into the air. One thing on this, all the molds were not airborne. They were contact tight, so they were growing on something. And the only way you can really get them into the air was to disturb them, come up and brush on it, step on the carpet, move drywall, things of that nature. So, that's why the air scrubber was brought in. So, anything that was disturbed would be captured immediately and also irradiated with UV. Throughout all this, we worked with the courts, different times that we had to come in and out, just due to different work processes with them. Sometimes, we made noise, so we had to work with that component as well. We did some after-hours work. We used a totally organic mold-killing compound. SDS sheets were given to Carol Stocking. I used her as my point of contact for all employees. So, I came up with a daily mold report for a while there, when things were changing at such a rapid basis, sending it out to administration, to Carol, and one of my guys, just so we're all on the same page. And if there are any questions, people could ask me right away. And we weren't just kinda trying to miss something or unintentionally missing things as we're going through this. Throughout this process, on the north end wall, all drywall was removed. Down to the block wall, there's a inside wall, and then the outside block wall, that's where the mold was coming, was growing, was on this outside block wall. So, you couldn't really see it when you were in the offices. You actually had to remove the drywall, get back in there, take pictures, physically remove it, remediate it, haul out, treat the walls, and then, we could start building back again. All those steps are, are on the mold event timeline. A couple of things that we did do as we were going through this process, we looked up in the ceiling. We took, we have a camera, a remote camera, that we went into all the offices on the outside walls. We bored holes with inspection panels that are going to stay there. So, in the future, we can go in once a year, probably in the springtime, after we get through all this thaw and the snow and everything melts, make sure all our surfaces are still dry and clean. So, if you go down there, probably in another three to four weeks, we'll have the, all the walls complete, but you'll see these little squares every so often. That's what those are gonna be for. We're currently, as of yesterday, building stud walls in there for the inner subwall. We're looking to drywall approximately Monday, Tuesday of next week. And then, within the next two weeks, have everybody back in where they should be. The outside, on the north end, the water that potentially go in there, we found that by insulating and doing some sump processes on the north wall, if anything does come through, it will go right into a sump and not stick in between the subwall and the main wall. So, that'll be, you've probably seen different TV commercials calling for sump pumps and basement drying systems. That's what one of these are. So, that would eliminate a lot of disturbing of the ground on the outside of the building. We also removed the sprinklers that were near the building, put them out in the center of the yard. So, we're gonna remove that kind of water potential that's gonna run down the side of the building. Currently, today, we were over on the east side of the building, because there's only about a four-foot strip between the building and the sidewalk. That's all being excavated, and we're gonna go ahead and re-outside, or reseal on the outside of the building, as well as on the inside, as a double check. There were some issues with how the drainage was set up off the roof. That's all being moved. Sprinklers, again, are being moved. So, we remove any potential in the future. One of the other things that helps foster mold is air movement. Mold does not like air movement. One of the things that we found that was inherent with some of the engineering when these buildings were put together, was the amount of airflow that was down in this basement area and the type of filtration used. I worked with the engineer, or an engineer here in town, as well as the manufacturer. We increased the filtration from 30% filters that were standard up to a 93% filter. I did it for all three rooftop units, and in each office area, there's a fan coil unit they, that takes care of probably an area this size. So, we increased the filtration from 30% to 93% on those as well. So, we're trying to take this as a step-by-step systematic approach, doing one thing and looking for results, rather than doing many different things and not finding out what actually worked. If you look at your chart on the handout, there's a green section, which was our final from Moldman. And then, compare that with the red section, and you can do numbers a number of different ways. But at the lowest improvement was we had a 75% reduction in mold and in the areas that were tested. If I look at, not so conservative, and just look at some different numbers, we're averaging between 80 and 90% cleaner air in, in the mold reduction. It's kind of where we're at. And then, I also, at the end of it, put my independent opinion from Moldman. He did not do any work physically, except for coming in and taking a final sample. So, it's as independent as it can be for the condition, and he gave the recommendations that you see highlighted at the end of that report.
Joe, on that chart, on the yellow section, under 8/21/19 Floodman.
Mm-hmm.
Is the day after the Moldman, and it's showing us different numbers on the inside?
That's because it's, mold's a living and breathing organism. So, if you've got one day, what's a very dry day, the next day, it's raining and really damp, you're gonna get some inconsistencies. I put those in yellow to show that it wasn't a drop, but it wasn't a huge increase, but it is a differential. So, we're looking at trends.
Looking at the, the 800 number in the bottom of the yellow column, it's, it's more than the initial from back in, you know, when you first tested.
Correct.
Do we have typical numbers to, I mean, because we don't know much about mold? What, what's the mold count in here right now, you know?
We have no idea.
How, how do we compare these, anything?
There's no established standards.
Okay.
Through the state, through any agency, they do not have mold-established standards, because it varies so much. All we can do is a comparison with different areas. At different times of the year.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Do we have, these are sort of bad, good, neutral, but is there safe, right? Like, safe for human? Do we have that as a standard for these various? I don't know what all of these are, but I have terrible allergies, and I've been exposed to mold. It's awful. So, I'm curious, what are these bad compared to what is safe for people to be around?
Initially, when I was talking to everybody, they said comparatively, from other jobs that they have been on, this is, it's all safe. We are safe. Everybody's gonna have a different reaction to molds and allergens in the air. The best route you can do is to try to make the air as clean as possible through filtration and different types of air-moving devices, depending on where you're working. And this is from, not my, my opinion, this is from two established mold remediation companies, comparatively to what they do in other areas and other larger jobs. This was a small job to them, so they were able to focus in on what was happening.
So, there's nothing at the state or federal level that establishes safe levels of exposure to any of these?
No, because everybody's different. We had a MyOSHA report, and there was a call made to them regarding this situation, and they wrote back, "We cannot comment on this or do any action, because there is no enforceable mold standard. We recommend you do these." I think there were six components on this report. I had already done them. So, it's all on how your body's going to react, and then also, what the weather's like with whatever's going on that time of year. Springtime molds are gonna be different than fall molds. Summertime's gonna be different than all of them. It, it's just trying to make the space as clean as possible.
Are, in a basement office, are there any windows in this?
There are, but we have a closed system. We can open them up, but if you have a closed system, you're trying to filter all this air continuously. That's why I increased the filtration rate of these filters. The minute you open up a window, now you've just taken that whole process and made it non-functional. Because now, you're just pulling in outside air. And if on that day, you open the window, somebody's out there cutting the grass, everything they've just stirred up is coming right into the building.
Okay, Commissioner Klaus, and then Hundley.
And I've gone through that in my business with the mold, Joe. So, I appreciate what you're going through and what you've presented to us. But like Rob had pointed out, on, on the sheet that initial, you know, findings, and then on the, on the 20th and on the 21st, well, initially, 53 was bad. And then, on the 20th, 40 was good, and 53 is neutral, on the very top line. And it's the same, the-
There was no change. That, that's why it stayed neutral.
No, no, oh, okay.
There, there was no change. I couldn't really say whether it was better or worse.
Okay.
So, I had to stick with, it's, it's a neutral reading.
Well, well, you have neutral on the, we're like four lines down, where you started with 560, and then zero, and then 800, and 160 outside. It just, it's a little confusing when you look at the, the chart and-
See what you're saying?
The colorings, I used red, yellow, and green, because red was my initial samples. When everybody was saying, "This is bad," okay, fine.
Okay.
We'll put it all in red. Then, if I had good readings, which were lower, those went to green. And if there wasn't a change, or if it was different, then that just stayed in the yellow. I didn't want to confuse the reds as we're going across. It was just, the red was, this is our starting point. Everybody's saying, "There's an issue."
All right.
So, we don't want to stay there.
I, I appreciate that better than the bad, good, and neutral. Good, better, best. Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Hundley?
So, I think I'm understanding, basically, what you're presenting us here is, there is an initial reading of the, the date, that 4/3/6/26. I think that's just a weird, do you know what that date was? Could probably go into Excel and like format it, but anyway. So, there's a, so an initial one, then in August, we had these two readings. And then, over the next, you know, six months, year, two years, whatever, you're going to take additional readings. We'll, we'll start to see trends, I think, is what you're saying. So, like, with this, it's a first thing, and we can see some numbers, but we can't really make a whole lot of them.
Right.
And, and, and you'll, we'll see more as you present it to us in the future.
I'm gonna be looking at a spring and fall check. So, we are where we're at right now. This coming spring, I'll take another sample, another air sample. We'll find out comparatively where we're at. Go through the summer, and next fall, I'll do the same thing.
Okay. And then, we'll know what we need to do, if anything.
Correct.
After that.
We'll also be able to get more data to define how well these new filters are working, because they're gonna be on a quarterly basis of changeout. There are some other things we can do in the units that are mounted on the roof that give out all our initial outside air, but those are approximately $12,000 to $14,000 per unit, and I have three units. So, I'm trying to take it at a step-by-step approach.
Great, thank you.
Do you have a ballpark of what we've spent on this whole project?
Approximately $19,000.
Okay.
We did get some monies back from MMRMA.
Okay.
I think their, their cap was at $10,000. So, we were able to recoup some of those costs.
Okay, and feasibly, what more could we be doing? I mean, you mentioned the airtop units at, you know, $45,000 to do all three, roughly?
Roughly.
What else?
Possibly upgrade some more on the airflow of the units, which I'm looking into right now with the manufacturer and with the programmer for the building. Some of these things were inherent from the upgrade when it was done. I don't know why, I, that was 12, 14 years ago. I'm just dealing with what- I'm just dealing with what we have here and how can we make it better with what we currently have. I have reached out to the original architect. Unfortunately, his company closed down and he's in Pakistan. Makes it kind of difficult to try to figure out what was he actually thinking? What was his design narrative? How did he want this system to run? I'm, I'm kind of trying to re-piece this back together.
Okay. Administrator Aldrich, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, Joe, can you go a little deeper into what you think the origin of the mold is and what we're doing to, I know you touched on it with movement of the sprinklers, but we're currently in excavating an area around the courthouse, and we'll continue to do that. Can you describe that a little bit?
Sure. I think a combination of issues. One, the, the way the sprinklers were setting and the drainage coming off the roof on the east side, I think it was too close to the building at the time, so all this water would come down and it would pool right at the wall. Then it has no place to go but just seep down and through the ground and then down to the bottom foundation, where then it would potentially seep in or find a crack in, in the old stone foundation. This isn't a block wall, this is as old as the church was, it's the original foundation. So it's all these big blocks and stones that were fit together and pieced together with the old mortar. The other component is airflow. You've got two walls, an outside concrete wall, inside wood wall. There's no air movement in there whatsoever. So it's just a prime avenue for mold to grow. Now by increasing the airflow, we went from fifteen percent outside air to fifty percent outside air for that entire area. So that's gonna increase your air changes, which is gonna, in, in effect, give you more air movement. Along with the holes that we drilled in there, you're gonna be able to get a little bit more atmospheric change between the two wall sections. And hopefully that will alleviate all of this issue, as well as on the north wall where water was actually seeping through. If it comes through, it's gonna go into a trough and go right into a sum, so it's not gonna have the opportunity to sit.
Okay. Commissioner Klaus?
Joe, did you, when you had the wall open, did you have a insulating contractor to look at it at all? Or, and I'm assuming it probably was fiberglass insulation on the inside?
Yes.
Because you still, in the wintertime, you're gonna have that frozen stone foundation.
What we did was we put a vapor barrier in, in between that and the insulation.
Right, but there's still, basically you have a frozen, you have zero degree temperatures outside. Inside you have seventy-five degrees, seventy degrees. That, where that dew point, which is the reaction between the hot and the cold, where that meets, it will create moisture.
The condensation of that.
The condensation, right. Which the condensation is what will let the mold grow. If, when you open something up like that again, you might check with the insulating company and maybe spray a urethane foam on that stone wall. That'll keep that, that moisture in that, in the stone.
One of the things we looked at with that was the vapor barrier does have an insulation capability with it. And that's an actual fabric, it's about a quarter inch thick, which helps with that same whole thought process.
Okay. Any further questions? I'm gonna open up for a public comment. So if you wanna make a comment about this, we have some staff members that wanted to say something. Just come right up, make a line at the podium if you plan to speak, so we know when the line's gone, we'll consider it completed.
Good morning, I'm Shree Shively. I'm the employee that is the, the start of this whole problem, was my office is next to the mechanical room. Couple of things I did wanna state, because you were asking questions about those reports. The last two reports were done on the same day, but they used different collection procedures. So they have different results, just letting you know that, that that's why some of those results look differently. And anyway, so I wanted to let you know, I'm gonna read what I'm going to say, because some of it is from my perspective and some is, it today is report day for almost every person in the probation and community corrections area, and so many employees couldn't come. So they've asked me to address some of their concerns as well. So some of the things that I'm going to say are my concerns or my experience through the process, and the other things are other staff that are in the area. I filed a workman's comp claim back in May of twenty eighteen. I had been getting ill for years and just, every year seemed to be getting a little sicker and a little sicker, until I finally got influenza and pneumonia. And so my doctor was trying to figure out why I kept getting sicker and sicker. And after a long discussion, we finally, you know, he asked me what my work environment was like. And so I told him that we were in an old church and that the, the walls were old rock walls like Joe explained. And he said, "Well, do you know if there's any mold there?" And I said, "Well, there's a mechanical room next to me that's chock full of it, is that a problem?" I didn't know that mold was, I, I just didn't, that's not my purview in the world to know whether or not if mold's harmful or not. And he said, "Well, that's exactly why you keep getting sick if it's full of mold." So at that point, I filed a workman's comp claim because I had spent almost four hundred of my own dollars at that point for all of my medical tests and x-rays and medications and everything. And I was frankly just done with paying for that myself. And then at that point, they did have a mold company come in and they did studies on that. And that is the very first mold study, and my office is crawl space H, well, not my office, but the mechanical room. And so when they did those, what you're supposed to do with mold studies is yours, I have become a very big, I know everything there is to know about mold for a layperson right now. So when you're supposed, when you're looking at these studies, you're supposed to compare the outside air samples with inside air samples. And if the air, air on the, if the samples on the inside have higher levels than outside, then there is cause for concern. So in that room, the outside air samples for Aspergillus penicillium, which is one type of mold that causes severe respiratory problems, which is what I've been having, so outside it was one oh seven and inside there was twelve thousand eight hundred. So it wasn't even a question of whether or not that, well, that was last, last year, sorry, I apologize, let me back up. So last year when they did the study, they did not study outside, they merely studied inside, and the results-
Don't worry about the timer.
Okay. The results were eleven thousand something. I, I have that report here, but I didn't write it down. That was in twenty eighteen. They did come in, they remediated the mold in that area, they cleaned it all out, they painted it with, I'm guessing was kills, so the room was just very white and clean. And at that point, I did start to feel better and things got better, but it was also getting colder in winter and, and things like that. And so then spring rolled around, I started to get really sick again, and this time I was much more sick. And so I notified Joe and my supervisor Carol that I was having problems again. An employee from facilities came over to check the room. Then when he walked out, his exact words, "That's all good, clean and tight, there's no problems." And I said, "Okay." I walked in there and immediately took pictures of all the new mold growth that was in the room, because it was pristinely white. And, and you, it was very evident, there was green mold growth, brown mold growth, it was, it was not clean, tight, and everything fine. So then again, I was getting really sick and there, it became a point where I was having to go outside about every hour for fifteen minutes so that I could just breathe well. And keep in mind, when I go home, I'm not having these problems. At this point in the process, I never was getting better anymore when I would go home, but it wasn't getting worse. And so I filed another workman's comp claim. Went through that process, and that is when the next mold study was done, where the levels in my, in that area weren't one oh seven and outside were, are opposite, one oh seven and in my office were twelve thousand eight hundred. So actually in your mold report, because there is no federal or, or state guidelines for mold, safer and healthy, safe levels, it states that the mold reports need to be given to a medical professional, and the medical professional is the one that has to make that determination. So the, through the workman's comp process, I was sent to an allergist, and so I gave him that report, and he told me that I needed to me, he just looked up and said, "Please don't tell me you're in office H." And I said, "Yeah, that's my office." And he said, "You have to vacate there immediately, and I really hope you're not planning to work there long-term." I said, "Well, I've been there thirteen years, I don't have any plans to go anywhere." And he says, "You're gonna be a very sick woman if you continue to work there," and they don't fix the problem. And he said, "And by fix it, I don't mean what they did last year, which was just remediating the mold and painting kills." And he said, "They have to fix what the problem is." Which, that is exactly what Joe's doing at this point, I really do believe that that is all being done appropriately. And so I have not been in my office for, I think, three months now. And so several times though during this process, I always asked if there was prob, was mold behind the drywall in my office. And I was told that, "No, there's no, there's no mold behind there." And I said, "Well, how can you tell? You haven't ever cut behind it, how do you know there's no mold there?" "Well, there's only mold in that crawl space and it hasn't spread." The crawl space is actually open to my wall, so the crawl space in there has no drywall, has no nothing, it's just the old wall. And that's open to the wall behind my drywall. So there's no way it was just stopping. It, it was just wide open to that. Anyway, so that's fine, I, I respect the chain of command, I'm a military wife, and so I let people do their jobs until the point where my health is starting to be affected. At one point, I asked about bubbling along the baseboards in my office and said, "Is that for moisture?" And was told, "No, that's not for moisture." And by the way, even if there's moisture behind your walls, the drywall's protecting it. It's not gonna come out into the air. Well, in my education of the whole thing, drywall and moisture are food for, for mold, and that's exactly what makes it, it grow. So the drywall's actually, it's food, it's not protecting anything. I also asked Human Resources to please have somebody come and check behind the drywall in my office. She informed me that she did request that. That was still never done by facilities at any point, there was not a check behind the drywall. I do wanna point out, facilities, or Human Resources has been wonderful through this whole process. They have addressed any concerns I or my coworkers have had about anything immediately. It's not even been a question, "What can we do to help you?" is what they've always been told, we've always been told. So I want, I wanna make sure that you're aware of that. The mold behind my drywall was actually found, what I was told by the remediation company was when they started the remediation in that mechanical room again. And that is when the mold was seen behind my drywall. I was given a, one day I was told that they were gonna start remediating my office and to please, well, I wasn't told, my supervisor was told to tell me to take out any clothing I had in there, because I had some sweaters, anything I might need personally for the next few days. So I did that, I went in and take, took out some things, and they said they were gonna be working on that. So keep in mind, in my mind, I'm thinking the exact same thing they did the year before, which was the crawl space, and they blocked that off and they, they fixed all that, and that was fine. I didn't realize what they meant was that my entire office was then gonna become a hazmat zone and that I was never gonna be able to move back in there. So all of my office contents were in there during the whole entire remediation process, including all of my files. And so I literally had like a little box of my belongings. Thankfully, somebody else went in, got out my computer, got out like the electronic devices and things in there, but the other items were, there's, they were just in there the entire process. And then at one point, somebody did go in and remove some files for me, and so I asked my doctor at that point, "What do I do with the files?" And he said, "You can't ever touch those again, they're porous and that mold is just sucking onto them and it can spread." He said, "If you want my opinion, they need to be burned." And I said, "Well, it's literally every document I've ever had working here, I can't burn them." And he said, "Well, they need to be bagged up and contained in a way so that they don't spread to something else. But you can never touch them again. You can have other people that are not susceptible to mold to touch them, but you are not, you cannot touch them again." Okay, so, you know, at this point, I've been out of my office three months, I don't have any, any of my office supplies, I don't have any of my documentation or any of my files for three months. It's been extremely hard for me to do my job in an effective manner without everything that I need. I had Nadi yesterday from the state of Michigan for community corrections, and I told her that I didn't have many of the documentation, and I told her where the, the files were and that she could go look at them if she wanted, and she said, "I'm not touching those things either." And, and so even, even she refused to touch them. Everything ended up being fine with my audit, because I save everything on my computer and was able to print it, but they usually need original documentation, and I couldn't provide that. When they were going through the remediation process in my office, the vents in the office were not blocked at all. Staff was told that there was a process that they were using with the chemicals and with the filter, that none of the mold could spread airborne. I just frankly, common sense, that makes no sense to me. Everything that I've read online states that you are supposed to block air vents when you're remediating mold so that it doesn't spread in other areas. The day the drywall was removed and those vents were not blocked off, probation officers were having a lot of problems breathing and a lot of them were having issues. We had a probationer that's been reporting there for a year and a half, she had an asthma attack because she has COPD. She had to leave immediately. But we were told that there was no correlation between the work being done and these problems, that there was no correlation between the two because they were using the HEPA filter or whatever filter they were using, and that the chemicals that they were using were natural and could actually be drained. Well, okay, you know, I'm not gonna argue, but clearly it was causing a problem. I'm no longer down there, so at this point, this is all just everything that is happening with other employees. Staff have continually been told that the air quality, quality levels continue to test at safe levels, but we've never gotten a report from that. It just kept referencing the very first mold study that was done. But we never got any other tests that were saying that the air quality was safe. So the entire time that this process has been going on, all of your employees have been down there, with the exception of me, and then eventually three other people had to leave too. So the rest have all been down there. Also, another office next to mine, it spread to there, so hers had to be blocked off, but in the process, they also blocked off two restrooms. And those restrooms are the safe rooms for the courthouse in case of an active shooter or in case of a, a problem. So that's the only area down there that's closely available to any employees, and those have been blocked off for months now. You need to know, and then Joe even said that, the, the basement was not built properly. You know, that's not, that's not facility's fault now, it's whoever built the building. But we're now dealing with what's there. It wasn't built appropriately. In my office, the, the two-by-fours broke off at the base because they'd been so wet for so many years. And it can't just be on that one wall. It's gotta be through the whole basement area, because it's all the same old rock wall. And there was never any vapor barrier or any process between drywall and that to prevent any of this from happening. So while three offices are being fixed and taken care of, and I've seen what's been done there, and it's, it's, it's great, the process they're doing now is wonderful. I just wonder, why aren't you doing the rest, doing that to the rest of the basement? Why are we gonna be waiting to see if more problems occur? That's my concern with that. One big concern of other staff is during the process, jackhammering was done. So if anybody's ever been around jackhammering, it's not quiet. That was done while, during workdays, during staff time, and during when clients were there. Right next to them, you know, I have one staff whose office is four feet from mine, where the jackhammering was occurring, right there. You know, they have ear protection on and all kinds of protection, and my staff and the clients that are coming to see them had no protection at all. None of the employees, except for those who got doctor's notes, were allowed to be moved during this process. They've all had to remain down there. Right now, the probation area and the community corrections area is cramped, it's messy, it's not professional. Clients come in and ask why there's a hazmat area in this area, and I, "Okay, I'm court ordered to report here every, every month or every week, why am I, why am I here?" I have clients or coworkers that'll ask me, "Why is it okay for you to not be in your office, but I'm okay to stay down here?" And I can't address that, that's between you and your employer, like mine was between me and my employer. For those of us that are extremely sensitive to mold, even small numbers can continue to cause problems. So I believe that what Joe says is correct. The mold has been, I don't have any other reason not to believe that the mold's been remediated and that the appropriate process is happening. So when we were told that it was safe, I decided, I, you know, I have not been effective to my employees for three months. So I went down and I decided to, to handle their report day for them last Wednesday. I was down there for four hours. After maybe two or three, I started to cough a little bit, but for the next two days, all I did was constantly cough. Now, I believe that the mold's been remediated in those three areas. And I believe that you do have reports that say that they are, they could be, I don't know, because you're supposed to take these levels, these reports to a doctor to determine whether or not they're harmful or healthy for you, and I haven't been to another doctor appointment yet for that. I just know myself. At this point, I don't really trust anybody else, I trust my doctor and I trust myself. Because every time I ask questions, I was always, it was always downplayed to me, that this really wasn't a problem, that this really wasn't a concern. The, the courthouse itself is a mess. It's toxic, it's in a complete toxic building. It was not built appropriately, and I'm not even in construction and I can tell you that. There are windows that have leaked for the twelve years that we've been in the building. There is an office in the basement, one of them that's been remediated, that for twelve years, every spring when it melts, flooded. Never once was a wet dryback brought in to clean out the water. Eventually, they would bring in a dehumidifier that would stay for days to suck the drywall out, but- But no drywall was ever cleaned. And so behind that wall is whatever's going on behind there. There are areas in the upstairs, the main area of the district court, where there are leaks. And there's signs that say Facilities is aware of the leak. And that's been there for years. And the leak may have very well been fixed. I don't know that. That's not my purview. But the area is still water damaged and the drywall wasn't cut out or fixed or taken care of. So whatever's behind there is still an issue. But one thing I would really like to bring up is that there's bats in that building. And there have been bats in that building since we moved in. There's droppings on work surfaces. There's bats in all work areas. We've always been told every year, when they come back, oh, we've taken care of it this year. And I really want to say when I'm telling you these things, this is not all a reflection of Joe's work. This is the entire time we've been in this building. He's only been the facilities director for a few years. This has just been constant. We as staff have been expected to clean up after the bats because our cleaning staff that the county hires refuses to come in when there's bats. So we as employees clean up the bat droppings, but they aren't supposed to do that. Bat droppings, I've found now, are toxic to humans. The problems that they have are spread through the ventilation systems and can cause a disease called histoplasmosis that causes lung problems, flu-like symptoms, dry cough, headache, shortness of breath, impaired vision, joint muscle pains, which interestingly are some of the very same issues when you have mold exposure. So are we having problems from bat droppings that have been in this building for not just the 12 years since it's been remodeled, but however long this building has been there? Is it mold? Is it a combination of both? I don't know. I don't know. But the building is not healthy. There are employees on the top floor who have nothing to do with the district court that have reported that they have allergies all the time. And then when they go home, they're fine. So it's the building in and of itself that's a problem. There's a crack in the foundation in the basement that has been there for years and it's continually just becoming a bigger crack. It's under the carpet, so I don't know what's going on under there. It's a trip hazard and it's just continuing to get bigger. But the big thing that I want to point out here, and this is what my coworkers asked me to address as well as myself, is that employees shouldn't be made to feel that we're exaggerating, not being truthful, and if we're an inconvenience when there's documented proof that it has been an unsafe work environment. This has had a significant impact on employee satisfaction, morale and job performance. Many don't feel important or valued and we had just started feeling that way again after the prior administration left, the prior county board that left that was just destructive to employees in this county. We just started feeling that way again. We're required to use personal time when we have to go to the doctors for any of these issues or make up that time. We had a new employee that on her second day of work had to go to the ER because her symptoms were so bad. She didn't have personal time. She then was out for days from work. I don't, I'm not her supervisor, so I don't know how that was addressed. But I know that myself, if I'm sick, and thankfully, I've been out for so long, I'm not as sick as I've been. But when I was really, really sick, if I wanted to take a day off work, I either took a personal day or I was told I had to file a workman's comp claim for that day, which doesn't pay my full wages. So because I'm working in an unhealthy work environment, I'm financially impacted, as are my coworkers that all have to do this. It's not the responsibility of employees to know that mold's harmful. How you treat it, how you remediate it, all of those things. It's not our responsibility. All we want is for this situation to be fixed appropriately. What's being fixed right now is, but that's not the whole problem. We want the whole problem fixed. I'm afraid that I'm going to go down there when everything's good and clean and I can move back in and I'm not going to be able to stay there. I can't continue to work that way. I want to be down there. I want to be with my staff. But I also have to take care of my health. That's my important, my number one most important thing. I encourage every one of you to leave today and come over to the courthouse and take a tour so you can see where your employees are working right now and the environment that they're working in and to listen to them. That's the thing that they wanted you to know today is that they want to tell you what's happened. I understand that we're in the process of fixing it all. It needs to be fixed again, like I said, the right way. But they do need to be valued and heard about what the problems that they're having. That's really all I have.
Any questions for Sharice?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dawn Rector. I'm also a district court employee in the basement. And sorry, I'm so cold that I'm shivering. So my teeth might chatter and it's just because it's so cold in here. A lot of my notes that I made are the same thing Sharice touched on. So I'm just going to look through these and not repeat what she said. I do think that there's a general distrust in the employees at district court from, in the county, not in our court administrator, Carol Stocking. She has given us all the information as she gets it. She's been very good about that. But we feel that a lot of the information, we oftentimes don't get information until we push for it. Or information we receive isn't really accurate. At one point, we were told in an email that the mold testing was all done in these offices. And people started questioning and saying, I don't see any sign in my office where this testing was done. Where was it done? And it was after the issue was pressed that we'd been told the testing was done, but it wasn't. It was at that point that holes got cut into some of the offices and the testing got done behind the walls. But it's not even in all of the offices. And as Sharice said, there are many offices down there that have an exterior wall. Why are we not testing all of the offices? Why is it just a select few? I personally work in an interior office, so I don't have an exterior wall. But I still have a lot of the symptoms that Sharice talks about. I cough and I sneeze and I've been more ill. And I don't notice a lot of those symptoms when I'm not here. I blame it on the duct, it's coming through our ductwork. The day that we came in and the remediation began, it was alarming because we came into basically what looked like a hazmat situation. We walked in and down the hall, Sharice's office is blocked off, looks like a hazmat area, great big caution signs, respirator area. And we knew, we weren't informed anything, nothing of it. So we're all down there saying, what exactly is going on? Why is this area here that looks like this and are we safe? And then the smells, I realize they're saying that they used, you know, safe chemicals or not chemicals, but that the products they used were safe for people. And that may well be, I'm not arguing that. But the smell alone was astounding. It was, I mean, vinegar is safe, but you know, who wants to be in a room where it's getting sprayed all over the walls? It got so bad in the afternoon that I had to leave my office and go sit upstairs. I had a headache. Come to find out later that day, as I was talking to someone outside of my office, one of the clerks, she said that the staff cleaning that day, the floodman staff, they had been down there working. They had picked up all their stuff and they had left for the day. And it was within, shortly after they left, that the smell, I mean, it was like the smell, like you just inhaled it. It just hit the back of your throat, like it was terrible. You couldn't even hardly breathe. I don't know what they did. It makes me feel like they put off something. They did set up, they did something in that office and then they left for the day. But it was clearly coming through all the ductwork to us. Anything I've read online says that if mold remediation is going to happen in a place like that, that all of the HVAC systems should be sealed off, whether there's an air treatment system in there or not. And I just don't believe common sense tells me that whatever's going on in that office, there's cold air returns. I went in there and looked myself. I took photos so I would know. Cold air returns were open. I mean, it was obviously, as the HVAC is running, that air is getting circulated around. And I don't, I just think that it's, as employees, we just feel like we're not being told everything. Yes, we did receive the safety data sheets, but that wasn't until they were asked for. I personally sent an email and IHR has been great. But we weren't provided any of that prior to when this all began. So the safety data sheets were not available to us until many days after this started. I don't feel that's right. I think as employees, we deserve to know ahead of time and be provided information and be given the option of whether we feel that we want to be in that environment when that happens. The reports are very deceiving. They're hard to read. I appreciate that we get them. Again, we oftentimes don't get them until we really ask a lot for them. But even if you look at the graphs on those reports, or I don't know what you guys got versus what we have, but on the graphs on the reports that we have, there will be a bar graph and it might go over a quarter of an inch to 50 and another quarter of an inch to 100. And then it goes over a half an inch to 1,000. And unless you are really looking at those numbers, it doesn't look like, it doesn't look like the numbers go up as high as they do comparatively because the graph isn't, you know, there aren't lines that are even for each step. And so, you know, they say that it's safe. Well, if there's no safety data, if there's no safety levels, how can anyone say that it's safe? And any employee that has gone to a doctor for reasons since this began, every single employee has been told they cannot work in that environment and they have to be moved. So it's, that's not a coincidence. If every single doctor is saying that, how can it be safe? There's, any employee that's gone to a doctor has been told that. So I guess, oh, the floor, Sharice touched on that. But the floor continues to heave in that basement and the heave is getting worse and worse every year. Obviously, it's got to be either due to a building shift or maybe moisture that's coming in and even getting into the actual floor and causing that. I'm not sure because I'm not a construction person. But I mean, it's gotten so, so big that you can kind of roll your ankle on it if you're not careful when you walk over it. And it's, since we went in that building, that has gotten worse and worse. So there's some kind of an issue there. And I wonder with the treatment, I just question how it's going. It doesn't make any sense to me that we really can fix the problem without sealing the outer part of the wall. Because even if we seal off the interior of the wall, and maybe I'm wrong, I'm not a construction person, but it just doesn't make sense to me that we can completely, like that wall is still going to soak up moisture. Then it's going to freeze in the winter and the wall's going to, it seems to me that we're going to break up whatever treatment we've done to it now and is a potential, that's my question, is that a potential thing that could happen? And why are, I understand, we're going to, from what I understand from listening to Joe today, it sounds like they plan to seal the outer part of the east wall, yet we're not doing that to the north wall. And I don't understand, I know it's a big job and it's probably really costly and it takes a lot to do, but why one and not the other? And have we gotten some other opinions on that? The vapor barrier, is that okay? Not sure, you know, if we're putting a vapor barrier in there, if those walls still condensate in the wintertime and get the moisture on them. Is the vapor barrier that's there going to really correct the mold problem? So these are just questions that I have and I think other employees have. And just hoping that as a board, that you will all just take some time to look into it, come see where we work. We just, we want to be, we just want to be safe. We want to be in a safe environment and many of us don't feel that we are. I had a lot of the other issues I had written down were the things that Sharice already mentioned. So thank you.
Thank you. Administrator Alger, do you have any comments or?
Yeah, so more than a decade ago, there was a decision made to put, to create a new Hall of Justice by combining two old churches in the existing position. We are definitely experiencing problems because of that. We're committed to remediating the existing issue of mold. I think Joe has done a good job at doing that. We've relied on experts that do it, Floodman and others historically. And we're committed to take care of the problem. These are, Joe's systematic approach makes sense to me. We are, we're just working through it. There are people in that court that are susceptible and allergic to mold and they're having issues because of it. So the discussions I've had with Joe, and we've also spoke with Carol Stocking, the court administrator, about this. The chemicals that were used in part of the process, they are saying that they were biologic and safe to be used around humans. I understand that several employees were impacted by, even if it was just smell alone, they were impacted by the smell alone. So we're sensitive to that, but we're working through the problems as those problems are identified. The mold, in my estimation, from what I've heard from Mr. Berry, is the mold is being remediated and to a level of satisfaction. The area outside the church, or not the church, the court is being worked so that we can try to prevent additional mold from occurring. The, there are no standards. There was a report backed us from my OSHA saying that there had been a report made about internal air quality. And they said, there are no standards for us to even come and do an inspection with. So please do these six steps. And when I talked to Joe about the letter, Joe said that he had already taken care of those six steps. So all I can tell you is that we are working through the problem with Joe and Floodman. And we'll continue to work with Carol and the judges to determine what steps are next.
I would, both district court employees mentioned that you'd be free to take a tour there. If you do that, I would ask you to keep in mind that information gathering is deliberation. And so we need to make sure that there's not a quorum taking part in that. So if you are interested in that, please go through administration. And if it turns out that there are four that are interested, we should schedule an open meeting for that to be done.
Okay, I'm going to complicate that even more for you.
Okay.
I'm going to recommend that we appoint an ad hoc committee of three commissioners and two district court employees for fact finding and advising this board and staff on this situation so the district court employees feel like their concerns are being heard. So I will make the motion.
I'm sorry, what is the makeup of this ad hoc?
It will be three commissioners. I'm going to ask for Commissioner Coffea and Klaus and myself. Commissioner Coffea and I both have allergies to mold.
Yes, we do.
Commissioner Klaus has experience in construction and buildings. I think that's a good fit. And then I will ask Sharice and then find a volunteer from the district court to be part of that committee of five. Purpose of the committee is to advise staff and this board on this ongoing situation.
Do you want, wouldn't you want Joe on that to answer questions?
Nate and Joe will be part of the discussion, but as far as the committee members.
Okay.
You should be somewhat independent, I would think, yeah, as an ad hoc.
They should what?
Be somewhat independent and engage with administration and facilities as appropriate.
Yeah, and I'm sure as we meet, Nate and Joe will both be involved. So anyway, I'll, I'm sorry?
Staff will be resourced.
Right, okay. So I make that motion to form an ad hoc committee to advise staff and this board on the ongoing situation in the district court.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Go ahead.
See if you think it's friendly. Just that we need to start meeting as soon as possible. Right, we need to get this thing rolling. Because I do, I have actually experienced situations where there were ongoing mold issues in a place where I couldn't leave. And it detrimentally affected my health in the long term. And I actually still have consequences. So I do want us to take it seriously. And I appreciate the chairman's suggestion. So friendly amendment that we.
As soon as district court, or district court members can fit it into their schedule. We can include that in the motion. Okay? So I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
I supported it.
Supported by Jewitt. Any questions? Absolutely. Okay, so the members of this will be Commissioner Coffea, Commissioner Klaus and Commissioner Henschel, along with Sharice Shively and Carol Stocking as district court representatives. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have one item left on the agenda. Would you like a quick break?
Yes, please.
Okay.
What's the item?
Three minutes, make it quick.
Well, it's going to take 30 seconds.
She's got to go. We're going to take a very brief, three minutes. Of recess. We are complete with item ninety-one. We're moving to no unfinished business. We're on item eleven, new business TIF ninety-seven, added by Commissioner La Pointe at the beginning of the meeting. Go ahead, Commissioner La Pointe.
Okay, only a, just a comment, to, unfortunately, two of the commissioners were, were able to attend the study session. We had the director of the DDA come and explain TIF ninety-seven and, and their desire to extend it and the reason why it needed to be extended. I quite frankly was very disappointed. I mean, there's, I think there are other, I'll, first of all, I question the value of spending twenty-five million dollars on a deck that they admit is not the solution to, you know, they want to eliminate the number of cars coming to the city, but they're building more decks. And the cost is, like you said, ninety-four thousand dollars per parking space, net, for net parking spaces. So it's, I've got a lot of issues with it, but my primary issue is the, their unilateral plan to extend TIF ninety-seven, which this board, county board, several years ago agreed to a thirty-year TIF. And with the expectation and the way it was sold is at the end of the thirty years, you'll recoup your, your investment. Well, clearly they can legally do it. I, like I said at the meeting, I've talked to other people and everybody I've talked to is absolutely saying, no, you're wrong. They can't unilaterally extend something that was agreed upon. But unfortunately, the board at that time didn't read the fine print in the agreements that they approved and it in fact says they can unilaterally extend it. So anyway, I, what I'd like to do is, and we can then have a discussion at the next meeting, is ask staff to prepare a resolution requesting that the DDA conclude TIF ninety-seven at the end of the thirty-year term. I'd like to, you know, we've talked about it individually with individuals, so the, I certainly made my view well-known. I've sent a lengthy letter to the city commissioners making my views known and the hypocrisy in some ways of the way this is going forward. So I'd like to bring it to the board, have a discussion on it and see if we'd like to pass a resolution that, so they know that as a board, we oppose this, this extension. So that's simply what I wanted to do.
Did you want to make a motion to that effect?
So anyway, I'd like to make a motion to requesting staff to repair, and I'll be happy to work with them. A resolution requesting the Traverse City DDA conclude TIF ninety-seven at the end of the thirty-year term.
Okay, we have a motion.
Support.
So moved by La Pointe, supported by Klaus, to instruct staff to draft a resolution requesting the city and the DDA to conclude TIF ninety-seven at the end of the thirty-year term. Any discussion?
End of the current thirty-year term.
The current thirty-year term, yes. I think that was implied, yes.
Or exempt Grand Traverse County from it. They have the ability by which they can exempt the county from, from the capture, tax capture also.
Okay.
There's two different ways that we can do it.
Yeah, this is only for the county.
Okay. So would you like to include that in the possible wording? I'll let you guys work out the wording and we can, we can wordsmith all day when it comes to.
The counties, the counties, the amount of the county capture. If the other, if the other entities want to participate, that's, that's up, certainly up to them.
Okay. So this is specific to the county tax capture?
Correct.
All right, discussion on the motion. Commissioner Wielak.
You know, I, I absolutely oppose extensions of TIFs and we've, we've had a couple over the years, but I have opposed them also, but they, the city still has the authority by which to do it and they don't have to ask the county, they don't have to ask the school board, they don't have to ask the library, they don't have to ask the college. They, they can't exempt, they can't extend it without our permission. It's unfortunate, but it is a technicality that allows them to do it. So, you know, telling them we're opposed is always a great thing, but, you know, I don't know that that's going to be binding on them.
Yeah, I agree.
It, it won't be binding, but at least we're making our position known. And then there's other, there's other avenues I think we can perhaps put some pressure on them, some agreements we have with them in place that I think they need to know that we're going to take this, in my opinion, serious and, and oppose it.
Okay, Commissioner Koffea.
I guess a couple of things. One, I, because I was ill, I wasn't able to be at that study session and had I known that that would be, the TIF ninety-seven would have been on the agenda, making sure that I watched the study session before this meeting would have gotten higher on my list, which it is on my list to watch. So I feel a little bit at a loss to vote on this before I had the opportunity to get up to speed. So I guess my question is, is it necessary that we take a vote right now on this issue or can a commissioner, as is usually done, come up with their resolution, put it in the packet and then we vote it up or down? I don't really want to vote yea or nay about TIF ninety-seven until I feel like I've had the opportunity to do my due diligence.
I will take a roll call vote and you may abstain if you choose.
I think I should and, and I, yeah, I'm just not ready to take a position and I also.
Okay.
Usually, with a couple of recent exceptions, resolutions proposed by commissioners just appear in the packet. We get that Friday, we prepare, we research, we come and we vote on it. So I'm, this, there seems to be a pattern emerging of proposing that we put a resolution in the next agenda and I guess I'm not sure why we're doing that. Why not just put it in the agenda? Why does it require a board vote?
The motion is instruct staff, therefore it requires a board vote. So if, if you were to write a resolution on your own, it could appear in, in the packet without staff helping you on it? But however, Commissioner La Pointe has chosen to instruct staff to facilitate this resolution, therefore it requires support action.
Interesting. All right, well, I would appreciate a roll call vote because I would like to abstain.
And as our rules say, and, and any vote, any commissioner can request a roll call vote at any time, so. Any other further discussion?
I guess we'll, we'll discuss it next week and probably have more people in the, in the halls next week.
That's right, they are always welcome.
I, I mean.
Pardon?
Yeah, the, thirty seconds. I get the, I, my sense of the, the idea that a parking deck is not the final solution to all of our problems doesn't mean that you don't need more park, I, I don't know. I don't think I'm going to sway any minds and I, I don't know that my mind is necessarily made up, but by voting on it here, we're voting on it essentially, we're already, you know, saying that we want this done. So, I don't know, I'd rather have, I would have rather have had it on the, on the agenda to begin with, but that's.
Okay, Commissioner La Pointe?
I'm absolutely perplexed. When something just appears on the agenda with no notification, everybody seems to be upset. I am simply now saying, we like them, no discussion of whether you're for or against it, but I've just asked staff to put something out there that we then will discuss and this will give you a week's head up, heads up reps, if it does pass, to go and view the, or two weeks, to view the session that we had, study session was specific to the DDA.
Fair enough.
I mean, that was, that was known.
Okay.
So I, okay.
Just for clarification, could you reference, Mr. Chairman, the board rule that requires commissioners to request that we have to have a full board vote in order to ask staff to help us with the resolution?
It's actually in the state legis, state legislation surrounding how a commission acts. It acts by a vote of the majority present. Unless there's legislation that requires majority serving. So this board acts by a vote.
I'm saying for an individual commissioner to work with staff. For example, at our very first meeting, very first meeting, you had worked with our civil counsel to draft a couple of versions of the invocation policy. We didn't vote before you could do that and we.
Because it was staff's initiative. Because I provided something to them, they took the initiative to say, this is a better way to present that. I've agreed to work with them on it. That was their initiative, not the board's.
Would you mind just perhaps following this meeting so that I'm clear on the rule? Could you please send me the rule that you're referencing that says that we have to get a full board vote in order to ask staff to help us write a resolution? So that, just so that I could reference it, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
We're ready to vote. Roll call vote, please.
Wielak?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
La Pointe?
Yes.
Koffea?
It's abstained.
Hunley?
No.
Jewett?
Yes.
Four yes, one abstain, one no.
I vote yes.
Oh, I didn't say you.
I think you guessed I was going to vote yes.
Sorry, you were at the bottom. Passed.
Okay, we are, thank you very much for moving on to second public comment. Anyone say a few words?
Yes.
Start with your name.
Matt Check again, Traverse City. Just wanted to take a brief moment. I sent out each of you something in the, by email about slavery in America. It was entitled Texas Couple Convicted of Keeping African Girl as a Slave for Sixteen Years. What brought that to my mind was there were some comments made probably a month and a half ago by a former football player, Mr. Coopernick, referencing one of the early flags, not of our country, but it was mostly a battle flag. It was referenced as the Betsy Ross flag. I think you guys probably remember that. It was going to go on the emblem of one of the shoe companies. And he was, his statement was that he was offended that it was a symbol of slavery and racism in America. I really, really wish that football players would probably take a history class to maybe get the right scoop. That, again, that flag was requested by George Washington, General George Washington. It was a symbol of, of the united colonies in the war against Britain for, in the Revolutionary War. The flag itself was alleged to be sewed by a seamstress by the name of Betsy Ross and it's today, it's common knowledge, I, I believe that she is given credit for sewing that flag. But it is interesting that if there's a symbol of racism and slavery in America, Betsy Ross was a Quaker and she was an abolitionist. She was against slavery. And so I think today we have something, we have an anachronism going on where we're taking present-day political situations and trying to plug them into the past to justify current views. And anyway, I encourage you to read that. There are at least four African nations today that have slavery in it. This instance here came from a couple that immigrated here and they were high-level people in a country in Africa. Forget the name of the country, but it's in your article, that purchased a girl over in their country and brought her here, lived here for sixteen years, treated her as a slave, told her she was a slave and it was going on, still going on. The only difference is, and unfortunately, that most of those countries are Muslim nations. They are black nations. It's an instance of blacks subjecting blacks to slavery. That's probably the reason why it wasn't mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other public comment?
Bruce Moore, thirty-three sixty-three Summer Leaf Drive in East Bay Township. I'm in Commissioner La Pointe's district. In, it's important to note that the MERS representative mentioned that Grand Traverse County has given more attention to the pension issue than any other county. That's different from saying that Grand Traverse County has given more action on pension problems than other jurisdictions. That's an important difference. Although this commission has taken action to increase payments over and above the extended amortization agreement, there are no actions or plans or budgets to continue that process into the future. The, the previous commissions chose to provide services over and above what they could provide at a given taxing level. They had a choice to raise taxes or a choice to borrow money. They chose to borrow money and they did it in an opaque way by underfunding the pension plan. Effectively, they borrowed money from the pension plan. Unfortunately, it is now your responsibility to catch up. The most important thing that this commission can and should do is to maintain the confidence of the beneficiaries of this pension plan. If beneficiaries who are nearing retirement feel that they don't have confidence in the pension plan, they're going to start taking lump sum distributions instead of, instead of the more common joint and fifty survivor. If they start doing lump sum distributions, that will deplete the assets and you'll end up with a much bigger problem than you have now. It is critical that you fund this in a way and create confidence in the way that you're going to fund it so that the beneficiaries don't start taking lump sum distributions. Although I have issues with the MERS reports, the key information is there and it was there. It's underfunded. It needs to be funded at a higher level on an annual basis than has happened in the past. It's time to stop beating up on MERS and it's time to start making public statements about continuing funding the pension plan above the extended amortization agreement. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. Anybody else for, else for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment, move on to the agenda. Commissioner and department reports, anything to report? I was asked to mention the Senior Center. Senior Center is a city park and a city building and there is a county millage provided where the Senior Center network is part of our. the senior center network is part of our parks department, and the senior center, we provide services at that, that location and several others throughout the county. So, right now, there's a small group of seniors have gotten together to work on the concept of a new senior center building. The mayor and myself have been attending those meetings. Most recently, we've met, I think, last week with the architect, that they've chosen an architect, they're looking at very, very preliminary designs of basically how it's going to fit on the property. At some point, we're going to have to come up with a dollar figure and how it's going to be funded, they're looking for county partnership. We don't have anything concrete as far as numbers, so I haven't brought anything forward, but just, that's where it's at. Commissioner LaPointe?
Do they, a budget target amount, or they just?
They've got some ballpark numbers we're tossing around.
Have they given the architect a number?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
It's, like I said, very preliminary, but it is moving forward, you know, is the pace that could be expected in something like this. A lot of talk, but we just, we got to move forward with the architect to get some numbers. Commissioner Kofia?
Yeah, just briefly, I was able to attend, it was an all-day task force, August 23rd, the Michigan Joint Task Force on Jail and Pre-Trial Incarceration, we had Chief Justice Bridget McCormack, the Lieutenant Governor Garland Gilchrist, and what was it, like thirty people, representatives from county commission, legislature, and other who are looking into this question around jail and pre-trial incarceration. Commissioner LaPointe was there for part of the day, as was Commissioner Hunley, I believe, and I checked the room to make sure we didn't have a quorum, and our civil counsel, Tholen and Ms. Muggenberger prosecutor were among those, and myself, who, who gave testimony. But, very informative, I think, as we're looking at questions around jail and other, you know, pieces around how we are addressing jail population, it would be really valuable, it's going to take some time, but I would strongly recommend, and I will, I will send to Chris Kramer, the video, you can watch the video the entire day, and the morning is a presentation from sort of the experts, and then the afternoon is just folks from the community, and then myself, and Kit, and others who testified on this topic. So, I would just strongly invite and encourage my colleagues to take a look at that, I do think it's relevant to some of our bigger picture long-term thinking, so I just wanted to mention that as a recent, relevant community engagement.
Okay. Anything else before we move on? All right, moving on, any notices? I think we have any. Closed session, staffs recommending Labor Council, Matt Nordfjord, will be in attendance in closed session, will be necessary for the purpose of discussing strategy and negotiation connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement per, permitted under MLC 15.268(c), as well as to consider written attorney-client privileged legal opinion as permitted under MLC 15.268-h. Do we have a motion?
I thought you were reading the motion.
I was just reading the paper.
So moved.
Moved by Kofia, supported by Wheelock. Roll call vote, please.
Klaus?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
Hunley?
Yes.
Jewett?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Hinchell?
Yes. Staff, do we expect to make a decision upon return?
No.
Okay, so when we return, we will come back into open session? Oh, pos, okay.
Possibly.
That was a no, but, okay, so we may make a decision when we return.
Possibly is the answer we want to have.
Possibly. So, we may make, we will come back into open session and maybe make a decision at that time before we adjourn.
All right, we'll come back to order.
Motion to come out of closed session.
Support.
Moved by Willock, supported by Jewitt. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're out of closed session.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the Grand Tauris County Board of Commiss-- Court Board of Commissioners authorize county administration consistent with requirements of Supreme Court Administrative Order 1998-5 to calculate and increase cost of the court employee defined benefit plan over that provided by the funding unit's personal personnel policies and to amend the Circuit Court's 1990 budget to reflect the cost to maintain inconsistent defined benefit plan.
Support.
Moved by Willock, supported by Klaus.
2019.
2019 budget.
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I said about 2019 budget.
Moved by Willock, supported by Klaus to amend the 2019 Circuit Court budget.
That's what I read. That's what you said.
Okay. Any discussion? Everyone clear on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Roll call vote please.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
Hunley?
Yes.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Willock?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Do we have any further business? Seeing none, we're adjourned.
Thank you.